Welcome, all of you that we've been chatting to already, so. Welcome, um, let's move into the pledge of religion. Uh, one, do you hear approval of the agenda? Comments or? I'll move to the agenda. Favorite?
Oh, this is the old one, sorry. Well, we have no comments at all.
Alright, do? Um, I didn't do, hey, so we'll move right into the main event. Measure J Bond.
Well, it's not just me, it's. I'm gonna stall slightly for Mr. After.
We are ready.
We're back.
We're back.
We're live.
You wanna go ahead and put up the?
Wanna pull screen for me?
We're right here.
Yeah, click on it.
Good evening, board members, members of the community, I'm Bill Savage, I'm the bond. Program implementation consultant after the district and we have a study session presentation with you tonight and we've got a. Uh, the architect here, Joe Bella with ADIS Architects, Sri Balaji from ADIS Architects, Ellen Kelton with Landmark Constructors. And John Isom with Isom Advisors, so we want to give you an update. On the Measure J Bond program and why don't you go to the next slide, Manny?
Manny, can we take off the little tag at the top that says Ru Crane?
You should press the X, but.
You know, why don't you, this is not the, this is the other one to go to slide nineteen on, uh, sorry. We have a, so before I start. We have an update to the. Presentation for tonight that we want to read into the record that that will be provided and updated on the website, we changed one slide. And um, we are going to provide you with a. Review of a presentation that the board heard in January of twenty twenty five. That contain the background for the options related to the bond anticipation note when that comes. So those items can be placed in the record after the event. So. Yeah, okay. The one that was sent this afternoon at five. Davis at the last minute. There we go, that's one, thank you.
Is there just like one slide addition if we're going along with it on our computer?
There's just one slide addition and then we're gonna pull up a previous presentation to show you the background to the bond anticipation of. So, um. Yes, right, we are on, we're on the seventeenth, yes, so, uh, thank you. Let's start, and uh, tonight on the board's agenda, we have uh, two items for approval and the. Uh, the presentation is to give you background and seeks direction on future. Uh, approach to the main building seismic upgrades and renovations and so. The first item on the agenda is to approve a resolution. Uh, for a bond anticipation note to help us secure funding for the main building project. Uh, I'm sorry, the first item is to update the master program budget, the second is the bond anticipation note, and we'll give you some background. To both of those and then we'll give you a presentation on uh, potential next steps and seek board direction on how to proceed with assembling. Uh, project funds so that we can proceed with the project on the main building. So, uh, next slide please. So, um, the, we're proposing that the board approve an updated program budget as we discussed in the October meeting. Uh, and this reduces all of the other projects in the program to reduce them to costs incurred. The best example of that is that it transfers all remaining budget. Within the three rear classroom replacement project. To the main building project and leaves costs incurred at about fifty eight thousand dollars, you can see it on the worksheet when we go over it. Um, this is similar to what we presented in October with one. Uh, major change and I'll refer everyone to. Uh, the, the budget worksheet that you have in front of you in eleven by seventeen. But uh, the primary change is that it leaves our FEMA funds. Of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars anticipated future revenue as unallocated. And it's a little more conservative approach and it gives us a total main building project budget of eleven million seven seventy one, seven seventy five. So if you go to the next slide. So this is what's, this is page three of eleven and the reason there was no page one is that that had a. Commitments worksheet on it and this, I want to start with the mate with the total program budget. This is uh, the program budget worksheet, it's similar to what you see on the screen and it shows. Uh, if you look at the revenue side is at the top. And the projects are in the middle and it shows the proposed current budget as for the main building. As eleven million seven seventy one, one seventy five. And you can see the closeout of the. Uh, of the other projects and the budgets that were transferred in to the main building. And it shows the record of previously reported commitments and expenditures for all of those projects. So this is the same. Um, budget worksheets that we provide to the citizens bond oversight committee on a quarterly basis. Uh, and this, so this includes. The main building program budget, the uh, the main building project budget. Uh, after this one, this is the program budget. Any comments or questions on the program budget from the board? General understanding of the, the worksheet and what it contains. And you can see the program balance unassigned budgets, three hundred and fifty thousand at the bottom and eventually. Um, when we do receive funds from FEMA, those funds would be adjusted for the actuals received and they would be applied to the main building project. They would offset other, for example, we now have a FEMA project for the two portables at the front. Which is the basis of this three hundred and fifty thousand. Those funds would be applied retroactively back to that project and that would free up. The budget availability of the Measure J Bond funds that then would go into the main building project. Um, I will report. We did, we had a little bit of. Good news from FEMA. Last week in, um, in, I mean, so we're just, we, it's not included or added into here, but they did accept. A cost estimate for the replacement of the three buildings in the back. That was within. Far shooting distance of what we submitted. That well above what we anticipated, which was almost nothing and so. Uh, but we, we'll keep you posted as we go forward, but we did have good news that they accepted the project. And gave us a, an estimated return net of insurance proceeds. That we should have had to provide and so that was a, it was, it was heartening to see that with, uh, both the superintendent and I thought. We better just, we can talk about it, but let's not put it in anywhere in here right now and save that for a, a remaining or day later. When it comes forward, the uh, next slide, Manny? Thank you for the zooming is good, thanks. So, the updated program budgets focus all of the funding on the main building, the updated total construction budget for the main building. Uh, after costs for the EDC that were incurred to date, it will be nine million six hundred and eighty three thousand, one seventy one. And if you go to the next slide. And turn the page on the eleven by seventeen worksheet. Um, you'll come to. This is the main building project budget. And if you go to. Construction costs. Uh, in the lower middle of the page, it's E for construction costs. You can see that the total budget is nine, seven, 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 nine, nine, four and ninety four. You can see committed funds in the column. In the center, committed funds uh, for construction of ninety four, eight oh three, that's for the. Evaluation and design criteria report destructive testing that was performed by landmark as part of the pre-construction services. And that leaves a net budget or what's called the far right column, remaining budget. Uh, as I said on the previous slide, nine million, six eighty three, one ninety one, so that's the total. Project budget including all. Measure J funds remaining. And all state funds remaining and the core donation funds. Okay, so it's basically. This is getting all of our money. And all of our budget. Into one basket in order to get the largest amount available to proceed with the main building project. So that's the presentation, the portion of the presentation that deals with board agenda item number one. And then we can take other. Questions from that on that at the time or anything now if you have comments or questions on that now.
Just, just so, I feel a hundred percent like if it met. Any expectations from FEMA or, or anything like?
That's right, because. Only coming three fifty that would, that, that's our lowest, that's our low FEMA estimate right now of funds that would be received. Potential revenue to the program, we put that into unallocated. So this could go up by, by some amount when we do receive funds for FEMA.
And it's only FEMA that we're waiting on or there's other?
Well, the state funds have not been received and that's part of the discussion. In the third part of the program, which is. Uh, potentially br- a bridge financing option to the future receipt of state funds.
Guys, as a kind of a background question?
Sure.
How is it that the initial budget was so radically low compared to? What's now in play, as to the budget?
Uh, I think there's a couple things and um. The uh, the scope of work that has been, is being required by the state. To do the seismic upgrade on the building is far beyond what was anticipated when the Measure J Bond. Uh, pre-preliminary work was done in the master planning phase, the uh, so. The deficiencies, the critical deficiencies that are found in the building from the seismic. Are well beyond what was anticipated at that time. And since that, even since we've gotten involved in doing the site investigations. Uh, and there's a slide I think that talks about this a little bit, but the, the reality is, is that the scope of work is much higher. Uh, there has been cost escalation going forward. Uh, and a good example of other scope of work that's higher is the need to completely renovate and redo all of the restrooms. In the main building. DSA required scope improvements related to the uh. We have to put in a new fire sprinkler system, we have one line of sprinklers and two sprinklers that. Go into each of the classrooms now and that is not, not gonna cut it. Uh, we say we have to put in a, a fire sprinkler system and uh, Sri is going to show you that drawing. Uh, in a minute and that was not anticipated prior to the Measure J Bond passing. Um, so increased scope is the, that we really didn't know about at the time of putting the bond measure out.
Tonight, for example, on the fire sprinkler side, is that updates to code or?
Oh, the upgrades for the entire building.
It's kind of like as time went on, now we've hit a.
Right.
You know, we've hit a threshold for new code.
Whenever the cost of construction for this project or any project in the state that's governed by the division of state architect. Whenever the cost exceeds fifty percent of the replacement value, you're required to do this complete. Upgrade to current codes for access, accessibility, fire and life safety and structural safety. And so that's really the fundamental issue here. And we do have um, a variety of other building issues that I don't think we. I think in the initial planning for the bond, we might not have anticipated the need to do. A complete window replacement of costing as much as it's costing, we have. Historic building components that we have to save, so we need to do, you know, just a good example would be, we can't. Based on what we've said under CEQA, we can't go in and replace the roof with asphalt shingles, that would be the cheapest thing to do. We can't do that. Okay, we have to do a roof that's consistent with the character defining feature of the. Plots. So we're, there's a variety of items that are like that.
Okay. That's all, thank you.
And remember the, one of the other things we did too is we, in the original Measure J. There were what, five different main building, either four or five different main building budget pieces. That we combined all into one to create one project for the main build too, so. That's why those budgets look a little bit. Okay? Any other questions on this? Okay, so this will be a board item coming up, uh, and now I want to go to the next slide if you could. And talk about the bond anticipation note item that's on the agenda tonight, so it's on the board's agenda for approval. Uh, John Isom from Isom Advisors is here and I'm gonna turn it over to him, um. And he can talk about this item, okay?
Good evening, good to see you again, members of the board, members of the community, uh, John Isom, District's Financial Advisor. Um, what you have by way of, of action, of course, is a resolution that would authorize the issuance of bond anticipation notes or a ban. What we'd like to do is to take you back in time. And uh, and go back to that January meeting, just as a reminder uh, for, for you folks and then it might be new information for some of the other.
He's gonna put up the January slides.
Perfect, perfect. So, um, so anytime we help districts assess. Uh, accessing dollars and what makes the most financial sense, we look at all the possible lenses, right? And here, and we'll pull this up in a minute, but we're gonna look and talk about, one of the options was wait. Okay, let's just chop this project in half, wait, there's a cost of waiting, right, construction cost escalation goes up. Now you also have to have two separate like start finishes and that costs more. Uh, so waiting is one thing that we still wanted to evaluate for you. Uh, the other item, um, oh, there you go, keep status quo and wait, I got lucky on the first one. Um, the second one was a bridge loan, a bond anticipation note is a bridge loan, a certificate of participation is a bridge loan. Uh, each has unique defining characteristics, but the idea is to get money today. Bridging to the future bond sale that would repay the bridge loan. Okay, so we talked about that and then the third option was, hey, increase the tax rate. Right, we went to voters said, hey, this is gonna extend the old bond program, it's gonna keep around fifty two dollars. Um, but legally districts have the ability to go to sixty, so those were kind of through some of the evaluations that we looked at, so let's just go real quick as a, a recap and then we'll bring it back. So, you know, part of the discussion was all about the consequences of each of these choices. You know, if you look at it just through the lens of a financial, you might be missing the political, you might be missing the educational. So as you're evaluating, you know, the status quo, the financial actually is pretty expensive in the sense that construction cost escalation. Is gonna be higher than the borrowing costs of a bridge loan. Educationally, we're delaying delivering educational facilities that are new renovated, updated by a number of years. Um, and then politically, you know, people are also saying, hey, when do we get this building, when do we get this building? So being mindful of all of those things, um, we looked at that, probably the bottom line is that seven eighty six thousand dollar number, that's the consequence could be. In waiting as far as the additional costs. The next one we talked about was the bond anticipation note, this one had, oh, go back one, thank you. Um, this one educationally delivers the project sooner, uh, politically keeps our tax rates, delivers the projects not just for the kids, but also for the community. And then you can see financially at the bottom, uh, an ability of having about a six hundred and sixty five thousand dollar cost associated with a bridge loan, in this case, a bond anticipation note. Right, which is a tool that districts have in their tool chest, like a trans tax revenue anticipation note, a bond anticipation note just means it's short term, can't be longer than five years. Um, the good news with something like that is you have very low interest rates. Uh, the bad news is, is that sometimes you have less flexibility, some districts need to have a longer borrowing. For whatever the reason may be. The other option that we looked at by way of a, a, a bridge loan would be the next slide. And that's a COP or what we say is certificate of participation. Um, similarly, the bridge, educationally, politically, the same benefits exist, but the financial was, it was gonna be a lot more expensive. Just because those have a higher interest rate at the end of the day. And the cost of issuance, meaning what you pay, your financial advisor, what you pay, your rating agency, the underwriter, the lawyers, all of the folks that participate in that. Uh, these are just a much more expensive tool the districts use. Uh, so the last option uh, that was discussed at that board meeting, next slide. Was increasing the tax rate, again, hey, educationally, politically, we deliver sooner. Um, but politically, we also go against what we had thought at the time of the election, which was no tax increase. Um, certainly the, the, the least expensive as far as a tool goes, um, but at the time that we had this discussion. The determination was made, hey, we don't really feel comfortable with that, so if we're looking through the financial lens of, of what is the most economical. As well as educational and political, we settled on the ban. I think that if you go one more slide, because I think that might be, okay, well, we, this was a summary of options, a lot of the detail that we went through again back in January. Now, at that time, and maybe we can queue up the, the new slides. At that time, the direction from the board was sell the bond. And maybe if things cooperate, interest rates, et cetera, sell the ban, we're ready to do both and the board adopted resolutions at that time to do both. Geo bond and ban. Uh, so we went forward, we sold the geo bond, but we said, you know what, we're not in any hurry on the ban. Uh, Bill said, hey, we don't need those millions of dollars right now, we can wait and kind of be a little more choosy as to when we enter into market. And take advantage of lower interest rates, well, this is where we are, we're in the lower interest rate phase. And we believe it would be advantageous to the district to go ahead and do that ban now. And you might say, but wait, John, we already adopted the resolution, why don't we just use that one? They do have an expiration date on those resolutions, so when we talked with bond counsel, bond counsel said, hey. Let's adopt a new resolution, let's kind of freshen things up, we'd feel better since we, they, bond council's providing an opinion. As to the tax exempt nature for the IRS, that you need certain legal criteria. So, just kind of bringing you up to speed here, if there's a, I guess if you, if we can focus a little bit on the bottom, but I want to draw your attention to the original plan. And now where we stand, so the original plan had issuances in twenty three, twenty five and twenty eight. The good news is, we've had higher than expected assessed value growth. Meaning your tax base is a little bit bigger than we projected and interest rates are lower than what we expected and especially recently. So that positions us perfectly to access a ban and just to take you through the three scenarios. Uh, doing our due diligence, maybe we can slide that up just a little bit if we can. So we looked at scenario one, two, and then what we're calling two point. So when districts do a bond anticipation note, you can do, uh, really, one of three options, one is you can do what's called a capital appreciation ban. Whereby you're borrowing the money today and then you're repaying all of it, including interest when you sell the future bond. Option two is what we call a current interest ban whereby you are borrowing money today, you're making. Annual payments on that and then you're repaying it again with a future bond. In both of those scenarios though, is there a way to like slide that up just like an inch? Um, in both of those scenarios, scenario one, the cab ban only nets the district. About three point one million dollars, but if we can.
That's sort of a cut.
Oh, it looks like it got cut off?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's fine, it, it, you, you'll, you'll get the punchline. The other option, the current interest bond or ban in twenty twenty six is only gonna net you about. One point nine million dollars or, excuse me, one point eight million dollars. And then what we looked at is, hey, what maximizes the most dollars to the district is doing a combination of the two. And that's this scenario two point five where we're gonna get about three point five, six million dollars. Why that's relevant is because we have a future bond of four million dollars that we're gonna use to pay off these bands. And so you want to get as much out of that as you can, but you also have to be mindful that. A capital appreciation ban. Does carry a little higher borrowing costs with it because we're deferring the interest. So picture yourself, if I loaned you money and I said, don't pay me back for four years. You're gonna want a little more interest than if I said, here's some money, every year, pay me some money and then at the end of the four years, give me my money back. Okay? But the good news is, and most importantly, is with scenario two point five. Even though the cab ban or a portion of what we would be selling as a cab ban costs a little bit more. It's within the parameters of what we told voters. So it's not as if, okay, it costs a little bit more to borrow, that means the tax rate goes up, no, our tax base is. So it's not as if, okay, it costs a little bit more to borrow. That means the tax rate goes up. No, our tax base has grown enough and the interest rates are low enough for us to take that option. And you guys clearly know, as you've heard Bill talk about how. Tight the program is, the maximum project funds is what we want to deliver to the district. And so we're recommending scenario two point five for that reason.
Can I ask a question, John, to clarify one thing? Part of the net of the four million that gets to three point five is the cost of issuance is included in that, correct? So we paid already for two issuances, about a hundred and eighty five or a hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and eighty five thousand total. For two issuances to to date. Out of our program expense, but this that amount, that similar amount would be embedded in this net number, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. So it's not all the additional financing costs. It is some of the normal issuance costs.
Yeah.
That we need.
And and so, and I don't know if there's another slide after this for me or not. I don't think so. I think this probably concludes that. So what you have before you again is the resolution, what you adopted before, what we reunited before, but this is a quick recap what goes into it. So if the board approves the resolution authorizing the ban from that point forward. We will take that direction from you. We will seek out a rating from the credit agencies, Moody's or S and P, as we've done before. You'll approve some additional legal documents that it kind of established the parameters of the financing. If you remember, there was the big thick official statement that you guys had to approve and some other documents. And then ultimately, we would price the bonds, or in this case, the bands. So think of three phases. Phase one, establish all the legal documents and the parameters. Phase two, prep the bands for sale, getting a rating and possibly insurance. And then step three would actually be to price the bands. And that would be working with an underwriter, as we did before, who would say, we've talked to the investors. This is what we think the interest rate ought to be on a five year borrowing. And this is what we're proposing to sell them at. We would look at other bond anticipation notes, other short term borrowings. And then kind of twist their arms, right? Where you're a fiduciary, we represent you. The underwriter represents investors, and so there's some haggle that could affect the forward process. At the conclusion of that pricing, that actually gets locked in. Don't have to go back to the board. You're deputizing us tonight, essentially. And then we lock that in based on a verbal agreement with the underwriter. And then two, two weeks later, you would have money in the bank. So we're looking at that three and a half million dollar target dollar. Any questions?
You can answer my question, but funds would be available in twenty twenty six, all of the funds from the van. Or scenario two point five.
That is correct. And then we would be paying that ban off in three years or four years' time, and you would adopt a new resolution. In that instance, for a bond. The proceeds of which would be used to pay off this man.
The documentation suggests that the the ban would actually go out in twenty six, January of twenty six. Is that correct?
Yes.
So. So there's going to be potentially one more Fed rate cut that may impact.
In December.
Yeah, so is that the rationale for going out in twenty six or is it something else?
Well, no, I mean, interestingly, I I always say, hey, the sooner we can go, the better. Because you don't ever have to sell. If there's something that happens, if there's a tariff war or who knows what, and there's a spike in interest rates, we just don't sell. We we we, when there was the tariff issue going on, and I think April, we pulled. Bond sales. We just said, we're not pricing this week because the market just was crazy. But within the next two weeks, all those districts that were selling that week had ultimately sold. January is interesting for this reason as well. There's actually something, if you're really nerdy and want to bore yourself typing, January effect. And there's a phenomenon where there just is a lack of supply out of a twelve month period. There's hardly any bonds or bands for sale in January, mostly because the holidays get in the way and by the time you. So you have this lack of supply and yet the demand remains strong because you have December and January call dates. And that call date is when the investors get their money back from bonds that they bought years ago. So there's this supply of money that comes in. There's a lack of supply of options available. And so that usually means interest rates will drive it down. But Ted, if there was something like a, you know, they raised rates, for example, in December, and the market took their cue from that. And rates all of a sudden went up, then I think we would say, hey, let's sit tight, you know, tell Shay and Bill say, we need the money. We're really buying ourselves another six months from adoption to when we can jump in the market.
And if you go out in January, is there any kind of equivalent of? Like with movie releases, movies that are released in January are known as dogs. Is. Do people talk about January? Are they known as dogs?
No, no, no. I mean, frankly, investors know a bond is a bond is a bond. So a January bond is is as good as any other.
Okay.
Yeah, it's it's just really a function that you just have fewer bonds for sale in January because I, because of the holidays.
Okay.
Is there, is there ever a thought when there is a lot to choose from that you wouldn't? That that you wouldn't get sold like other scenarios where you go out and you just don't sell it?
Yeah, you could have too much. I mean, I don't think there's ever a scenario where you go out and you go, oh, well, we just didn't find any buyers. It would be, okay, we're going out. Wow, there's way too much supply. These interest rates are not what we were hoping for. There's a phenomenon that's going to happen relative to bond refundings. In August first of twenty twenty six is a call date for billions of dollars of bonds. And. In the state of California, and in fact, throughout the United States, you can't refund bonds until that date. But the IRS says, well, we'll give you this ninety day fudge room. And so you could actually do it by May first. So we have dozens, just our own company has dozens of districts that are all eyeing that May date. And I can see a scenario where there's a glut of supply because everybody else is eyeing that May date and everybody starts pricing in April. Hoping to close by May so they can refund these bonds and save taxpayers money. So that's a scenario very unique where everybody wants to price at the same time. So I think. We'll also be in a fortuitous position if we can price in January or February for that.
Yeah, get out ahead of that.
Yep.
Can I ask a question to follow up on that was? Your, is so it's possible the net number could increase if there's a change, a reduction in interest rates or a change? Positive change in interest.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the lower the interest rates, the more we can get. Conversely, if the rates are higher, we might lose out a little bit as well. So those are based off of today's rates.
Is now the appropriate time to ask about risk of paying these back or?
Sure.
I mean.
Yeah, good. Yeah, it's a good question. So any bridge loan. You know, we're expecting to take it out with the bond. So the question that we have to ask ourselves is what's the likelihood of us being able to sell? That future bond. And in our analysis, the the likelihood is extremely high. In fact, what we call it a stress test, like, okay, what would have to happen? For us to not be able to sell these bonds? Because you don't want to do a ban. And all of a sudden get to the point where it's like, oh, we can't sell the bonds. Now what? Right? You still, people are going to say. You know, it's time to bet. So our analysis showed that if the district grew at only point two five percent a year. For the next five years. Two point five percent a year, you would still be able to pay it off.
Grow.
Or a tax base, I'm sorry, to be clear, you're assessing value every year, which has been four percent a year. It's minimum two percent pretty much, you know, because that's the prop thirteen max that you could increase. If you grew it point two five percent for five straight years, you'd still be able to take it out. So we we feel extremely confident about your your ability to do that. Very low risk. If it was risky, I frankly, I wouldn't give it. No questions?
Sure, I'll have more.
Great.
Back to you, Bill.
Yep. And then you want to definitely back up.
I do recall, further than I do recall back at the beginning of the year, having this conversation about redoing this later in the year.
Yeah.
Yes, do too as well.
Sorry, we got there. Okay, so a little bit following up on a board member Roma's question. We're we're at a critical point in the main building project. So the scope of work is far beyond what was anticipated in the other day on. And you can see a list of bullet points here, which I went over just a second ago, but I I didn't mention the soil conditions requiring a complete. Foundation retrofit in addition to everything else. So we have to go in and put in a new foundation around the entire perimeter of the building now. Not just the perimeter, probably the inside sections too. So. And you can see the scope increases that are here. The cost of the work, based on the estimates that you'll see, and the structure is far above our original budget. It's and it's. It's above our current budget. And so what we've done is worked with the landmark and with ATIS to structure. What we call a minimum scope of work and a series of phases of work. Taking it, taking the original DSA set that it is being in the process of being approved by the state. And looked at how we can get as close as possible. To the money that we have available to complete. The largest scope of work to have a successful project. So I want to let the architects start first and walk you through. The minimum scope of work and then the contractors next after that.
I give first the delta because we went over that. What it costs, what we have and the ban. And I think if you're just listening to this for the first time, you think, all right, yeah, it's a lot of money, but we've got this. And really, the cost of the building is much more, it has exceeded that nine million. And so that's what we're, that we need an overview of that first to then understand why.
Okay, I've got that later. So I apologize for putting, so. Let me, Manny, can you go to this slide right here? It's after the architects and the architect and contractor. It's like thirty one, twenty two. Okay, really?
I I want everyone to really understand the money situation.
So, thank you, Shay. You should have, you should have had it twice and we could say it once and we'll say it again after the, on the other side of the discussion. So the phase one minimum work that you're going to see presented. We have a total current available funds, which is the cash balance available. And where the uncommitted funds and the band proceeds are. Our total amount available would be seven million sixty five thousand, two hundred and sixty four. The minimum work. Phase one estimated cost is eight million, five twenty eight, one seventeens. So we have a delta of just on the minimum work. In terms of cash balance available without state funds. Of one million, four sixty two, eight fifty three. If we then factor in the full construction, that will still be over our available budget. We add in the state funding of three million, three oh two, four forty four. And our district total with all funds, including taking three hundred and fifty thousand from the FEMA, assuming we get that. Ten million, three sixty seven, seven oh eight. And the current. Full estimated cost from landmark is thirteen million, one hundred and ten, six oh two. So we have a delta to the total cost of two million, seven forty two, eight ninety four.
Now we can go back and understand.
In the context.
And thank you for.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Good evening, board. Good evening, North Millie members. I'm Shri Baladi with ISL Flex. I am gonna walk you through the minimum scope of work that's needed for. That's needed by the state. That's. That's going to be very much has to be part of this stuff. And I've split them into three buckets, sort of, to say. Structural safety, accessibility, and fire safety. And this is how the state architect also reviews our plans, the three. Buckets that they look for to make sure that you have the seat holding that's seismically fit. You have a building that. In the in the fire rating and fire safety, it's it. And then you have a ruling that. Can allow an access of a person with the able disability to access around the voting. And so these are the three major points that DSA actually looks for. And with our scope of work. I've come into splitting all the minimums that are required under each of these. Next slide, please. So starting with the site work. It, this is our site plan that we submitted to DSA. Everything you see in yellow here is the absolute minimum work that needs to happen. Everything else is. Can be. Done at a later phase. So we have the parking. That's the point of arrival for the site and. From the parking to the building entrance, and that has to be accessible, the path of travel from the parking to the entrance has to be compliant. You also need a path of travel to public right of way, which here is Bond Street is what works most for our layout. And everything else is existing to remain. Everything you see see in dotted, it's kind of superimposed to. The existing to the new design so that you can see how the final. Site plan will look like when. The phase one of the project is actually complete.
Ree, can I just point out one thing that the yellow square in the front parking lot? We just finished. Redoing that to meet the ADA requirements for the two portables. And yet we're still being required to upgrade it again. Is that correct?
Yes, that is because the grades have slightly shifted when the portables were put. And the sidewalk needs to be compliant to the new parking lot. So that work, the, because the sidewalk, part, portion of the sidewalk has to be redone, the parking lot has to. Kind of be in place for for the grades to accommodate the grades.
So the work, so the work that we just had done on this, we will have to do additional.
Just restripping.
Oh, just pre-stripping.
Restripping of the parking lot, yes.
And the front sidewalk.
So the front side, this portion will all be new concrete and just the parking lot, the stalls, ADA stalls alone will be restripped.
So the real work is on the, on the side.
On the sidewalk is, yeah. Because there's a significant drop from the corner of the street down to where your current entrance is. And so that's. Have, we tried to. Take a stance with DSA that, you know, it's a shared property between the county and the school. But it is still very much within your property limits. So. As part of the project, they will want you to bring it to compliance.
So this, this whole yellow space highlighted space in front is in front of the fence, correct?
Correct. So your fence, yeah, yes.
And just for reference with the new phase of stuff, is the fence staying or is the fence going?
No, the fence is going to be remaining in place.
The same.
It's the same, same fence, same height, same fence, same trellis.
Then is there a widening there between where we have parking?
Yes.
Yeah, the sidewalk is slightly wider for to accommodate the.
It doesn't seem wide enough for what we are planning. So it will have to be widened.
Lightly wider.
So these stalls will be, sorry, I'm pointing at my own, but those installed stalls that are not ADA will inevitably be pushed back.
And you do need a curb that separates the sidewalk and the parking. So that's for safety reasons, so the car doesn't run into a pedestrian while walking. So that curb is just south of that yellow highlight.
For that there are other parents here that walk that space every day and run into each other and bump up against cars and stuff that might appreciate this very much.
Yeah, it's not a wide enough space.
Minimum is at least forty eight inches, that's four feet. And that's kind of what you're seeing here. It's not forty eight right now.
Is there a thought, will we, will we lose any of that parking to get it to, we can continue to involve that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I also just kind of wanted to point out, as somebody who's seen a lot of these plans, that the. That whole entranceway and and entrance to that. That left set of doors is very different from the original plan that had like this big. That had like this big, you know, raised area and like a hangout kind of space and all of this stuff.
Yeah.
Um, it's going up on the, the left side.
So this is, yeah, originally this was still part of the hangout space and the seat wall and. You know, the landscaping right behind it, the seat wall was meant to retain the grade behind it, um, but. Bringing to absolute minimum scope that's required, we have just a pathway going up to the building.
So there's a tree, there's a tree in that space now, that tree will be removed?
Uh, yes, it has to be. Any landscape that's in this area.
Okay.
The, the big huge tree stays, the other trees, little trees.
Yeah, there's a very large tree.
Yeah, that tree still, I think.
Behind the.
Yes, that, that ones, there are two little ones in front of it that both ones have to go. Um, and all the landscaping in the planter by the flagpole, just in front of the building, that's all remaining. The pathway to the um side entrance of the school, that's still staying. This path on the right side, um, that's current school entrance, that's all staying as is.
So significant reduction in scope.
In site work.
Have you gotten any comments back from DSA?
They were supposed to finish review end of last week, so it'll sit on a supervisor's desk for a week or two before it gets, it gets released.
In, in a way, I kind of, like, maybe comment, but in a way, I kind of feel like um, people might appreciate this more. Um, so, cause it's like staying.
You retaining part of what is already there?
Current, instead of like some, I don't want to say it was gaudy or anything, but like it was, it was definitely a large change before. It'd be nice, but um.
It's a luxury.
Yeah, yeah. To say, to stay more familiar, but.
Um, okay, and I'll go into, so this is part of site work. Um, as you can see, a large portion of the work, um, is not highlighted in yellow. That includes like the fencing around the mechanical um unit, the back portion. Um, the concrete that's right here between the um taxi hall and the ramp. All of that is, is not in scope. That's site work. Um, we'll talk about structural safety next. Right, I think it's gotten backwards. We'll talk about accessibility in yours, it's the next page. So accessibility, um, as far, so from the site when you come in. Um, one of the things that DSA looks for is um. The restrooms that has to be brought to current code. Um, in our new program, the layout, the, all the restrooms are moved to one site. Um, and partly also this uh, to strengthen the foundation that's below that area. They'll have to open out the floors and add new um concrete foundations to that area. So when you put things back, you have to put it back compliant to current code. And so part of that, because of that, the restrooms become like a mandatory requirement to be fully upgraded. So you're seeing girls restroom, boys restroom, um, the two staff unisex restrooms. Um, I'm sorry, one staff unisex and one student unisex restroom and the janitors, that's all part of the mandatory scope of work. Um, access.
Uh, one student restroom is on the hallway is accessible for after hour programs and those types, so you have that extra restroom. Uh, that's adjacent to the hallway to be accessible for other events that are kind of.
There was, um, yeah, there was, uh, the intent for it to open out to the hallway was so that it can be used um after. Um, you also need compliant ramp access out of the building, so that's also in yellow. Um, and then also comply, uh, all the doors have to be compliant as well, that's highlighted in purple. Um, and the um, the back stair, that, that is also being. Because the grade, the floor, um, the grade that the floor is set at is not changing. So everything around the building has to be slightly adjusted so that that grade at the finish floor level is maintained. Um, all the interior walls are being furled out slightly, so you'll see the blue perimeter that's going around. Um, while we are doing that work, this would be the best time to get all the electrical roughens and all of that in place. So that we're not going back to redo that work and not having to tear open walls that was just put in. So um, as part of the minimal work, all the minimal lighting and electrical roughing is also going in, will be part of the minimum scope of work. Uh, floor finishes um will also be part of the minimum scope of work, so a disabled person can access throughout uh the building. So the um, is part of the required uh path of travel. Um.
Can you talk a little bit about also the um accessibility for the lift and the stair for the stage access?
Yeah, so for the stage access, right now, the, the stage ax is accessed by the two front stairs. That's in front of the stage, they're very narrow right now, but they are remaining in place because it is part of the character defining feature of the building. What um, the state architect is requiring us to do is provide access to a disabled person to get up to the stage. So what we are doing is um, making up. A small uh penetration in the wall that's uh on the corridor side, the hallway side. So that um, a person in a wheelchair can try directly roll through into the uh platform lift and then the lift will take them up. Um, so because of the placement of the platform lift, that's the best spot that it can go in with. Uh, where they can access the stage. Um, the mechanical component of it goes all the way to the basement below. And so the stairs, when the platform lift goes all the way below to the ground of the basement. Um, there's not enough depth when you walk down the basement stair in front of the basement stairs. So we had to re uh orient the stair configuration so that um. With the addition of the wheelchair lift, um, someone can access the basement. And the entire stairwell then gets reconfigured. And as part of the value engineering exercise that Ellen's gonna talk about in a little bit. Um, we can, we can value engineer down in certain metal stair to a wooden stair. So that's part of um, the value engineering options. But stairs and uh platform lift is part of the minimal scope of work.
Um, I have a question about that, cause I, I mean, you only assume that a lift is fairly expensive.
Um. Forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, just a couple bucks.
Um.
Is there, I, I'm, I'm, and maybe you guys look at it, but is there any scenario where a, a ramp would be?
It's a lot more impressive to put up.
For the ring.
And there's no state.
There's, yeah, and, and faith being a consideration here, yeah, so.
Um.
We actually, we actually during the design, early phase of design, invested that pretty extensively. And um, it was, it basically left the hallways with very little room to negotiate around. Where the number of students coming would be coming around those areas, so it was uh, if we looked at kind of all the different scenarios.
We even moved the, the platform lift to the backside of the stage. Um, just so the basement, it's not in front of the basement stair. We tried all sorts of permutation combinations, but the drop here is um, quite high, going down to the basement, so, yeah.
I figured it was a simple, a, a simple question about, I don't know, you know.
No, we, we did look at a lot of different uh scenarios for locations of the, the, the lift and locations of, of possibly putting in a ramp. And just wasn't really as feasible.
Because a ramp has to be at a certain pitch, right? So you get as, as a long runway.
And we're about, what, uh, eighteen, twenty four inches high?
Yeah, the, the twenty four inches, yeah, twenty four feet.
That's a.
Length of frame.
Maybe tired. Uh, so in this, so in this situation, we have like, there's AV equipment and like rigging and all of that stuff. So all of that has to go somewhere else.
Uh, rigging is uh, gonna be taken down and reinstalls just at this. Um, there's no upgrades to those. AV equipment is moving to that wall.
Corner.
Yeah, correct, cause it's currently over here.
Right, right.
Um, it has to go to that, that corner.
Yes, you tell us what is proposed for the light bar system that's out in the auditorium?
Correct, so um, currently there is a light bar right there. Um, and uh structurally, uh, it can. The existing rate as is, it can still support that. So the bar's still gonna be more or less in the same location with a newer bar and new light fixtures over there. Pointing to the platform.
But it ha- it has to be taken down to do the work.
To do the work, it has to be taken down and then it's being put back with new.
Then what is the cost of um, that putting in the new lights and the bar?
We have to lose.
Yeah, I have that in the electrical number, um, so I don't have it broken out specifically for that.
The school actually doesn't lose that.
Okay.
So.
See what it costs.
So the bar, the bar that's currently there will.
Is to be taken down for seismic work.
Yeah, I mean, the same bar can go back or no?
It won't be able to, um, in a, be in a good salvageable condition to be able to be put back.
I see, and all the light fixtures, stuff up there, those would be acceptable to go back or?
They, yeah, but they're, they're pretty old and probably, you know, at the end of life, if it makes sense.
Oh, we know they're.
If you're interested, um, that part I did not know how much it would cost, so I, I would like to delve into that a little bit.
We can find that, you know, just.
Uh, we would go through an AV exercise with Sean. Um, and he gave us markups um, based on his input. We picked those markups in the DSA sub motto. Um, he wanted more outlets and things like that, so uh, that's, all of his, most of his asks were incorporated. Um, so there were some heavy ticketed items in those asks that have been tabled.
Ask for the world, but now we need minimum, minimum scope from John too, so.
Um, all right, so.
Can I throw you another curveball?
Sure.
Uh, the structural, can you do the structural work from this slide?
From this slide?
Yes, but the, the packet that's in the audience and that the board has, has a structural drawing next.
Yeah, no, it's the first page.
It's not in the presentation, that's why.
Not in the presentation, I'm like, where we here.
Yes, so it's the first one, right?
Yes, so.
But this has the foundation record.
Yeah, it has, yeah, yeah, I can, I can go through the. So as part of the structural work, we have, Ellen can correct me on a number, but we have over sixty five columns. That needs to be added to strengthen the building, so it can perform well during an earthquake. And that will make your building safe for the kids and staffs that are gonna be in the building. And that structural work is mandatory, because uh, as I will explain before, fifty percent cost of replacement. Um, anything above that threshold has to be, it, it automatically triggers mandatory seismic upgrades. So with that work, uh, because all of the perimeter foundation has to be strengthened. Um, with columns, uh, it also adds to strengthen uh part of this wall. So, uh, and um, to do um. The seismic strengthening around this perimeter area by the bathrooms, they'll have to take the floors out. Um, to reach the foundation to strengthen it. And because they have to take the floors out, they have to do the bathroom, like I explained before. Um, and um, the skin of the building pretty much stays. Um, the ceiling diaphragm has to be uh completely strengthened. So the easiest way, or like the most cost effective way to drop the columns in place is through the roof. Um, they'll bring large size of twenty four feet high, I believe, or about thirty feet high. They'll have to drop in through the roofs. Um, so the roof has to come off. Um, when we put the roof back in, it has to meet today's minimum code, that is the minimum required insulation requirements and all of that. Um. So be, the ceiling diaphragm strengthening is, is one of the major components of structural retrofit apart from adding the columns and foundation retrofit. Did I miss anything, Joe?
Uh, just foundation, yeah, the whole foundation, when we came back with that soils, uh, information that Bill's mentioning earlier. All, so that our structural engineer and Tizzy, because uh, he had to completely redo the foundations that he had anticipated with the previous information. So that uh.
The value, um, the settlement values, the essential settlement values, they doubled. So it's. It added, also adds to the cost um, to strengthen the foundation, to, to be able to correctly perform. To that doubled value.
Um, so my understanding of the way that the work scope, maybe you could sort of outline it. That we'll have to cut open the floor all around the perimeter of the building about five feet in.
Yeah.
In other words, so they're gonna need to work from above and below to do the foundation, do the forming and the rebar for it. And the doweling, and then drop the columns and open the ceiling and the roof. To be able to drop everything through. And then they're gonna have to repair the floor all the way around the perimeter of the building. And then, you know, she, Shri had already talked about the new floor finishes, but the sheathing itself is gonna have to be replaced. The joyous stay and they'll work around it and they may have to take out one or two to be able to work, but um. Uh, like the entire building will be open around the perimeter about five feet wide at all the different levels. No, no, yeah.
That's all handwork because of.
It's all handwork, you, you can't get a machine in there.
A really small one, right?
No, and in terms of the roof also, the roof material, the roof material is not seismic. The current roof material is not seismically anchored in accordance with current code. So all of the new tiles, when we go to put them back on, everything has to, the entire roof has to come off. In order to get a roof that's anchored in accordance with current seismic codes also.
The building has not been updated since thirty nine, so it's, it, we are past so many code cycles.
Just a few. So this is uh ve- very large equipment, cranes dropping in.
Cranes be on the outside.
Nobody goes, button stuffing.
So we, we looked into the option of slicing the columns. Um, and Joe can talk about it much better than I can.
It has to be welded.
They'll have to be welded in place and you have a hundred year old building with really dry wood inside and it, it.
You said what, sixty nine welded columns?
It's, yeah, it's a fire hazard.
Should have, waiting to happen. So specialist in that I.
Very old, dry wood and we, I've been on disturb building projects before that was not pretty when they brought in workers. Just to grasp the base, so.
Um, is, but I'm just thi- thinking, you know, this is a lot of stuff, but um. All of the equipment that we use in this project and stuff, maybe this is for landmark thing, but. Um, is it have to come what's from somewhere specific, like does it have to be, you know, from some certain supplier? And, you know, certified and things like that, or could it be donated or um, you know, in kind from, maybe somebody from the community or?
Are you meaning like a light bar and things like that?
No, I'm talking about like, like uh, construction equipment, like.
Like a bobcat or.
Exactly, like things like that, right, like heavy equipment.
Um, so there are specific requirements that, that have to be met for them to be able to use it on a construction project. Um, and generally the sub, specialty subcontractor will either own that equipment. Um, or if it's something like a crane, cranes are, are rentals.
And it's got this liability issues.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's ocean, and yeah.
So, I mean, it's, it, I don't wanna say it's a no go, but um, you know, if it was provided potentially from a reputable company. In kind donation, then there's possibility there.
Yeah, if they were going to go rent equipment for a day and that was donated in kind, it was the same equipment, but it, I don't see that. Fair enough.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We know people, but yeah, I just, yeah, okay.
Not impossible.
Yeah, making outside the box.
Yeah.
And so I, I just want to say like, you know, we're looking at this and we're looking at the structural and the seismic and we knew there was seismic and just. You know, for people who are just tuning in, anyone who's at home right now and saying, how are we here right now? We had this bond, we had all this money, you guys gave us some kind of plan and it was supposed to cover these things or whatever. And what we're looking at is code changes and, and as we spent money to investigate with our soils. All of a sudden, we discover that, you know, what we, what we thought under the building is not going to cut it for what we had estimated. And so now. And so now, when we are tasked with making this very difficult decision about what parts of the program that we need to cut and what we're gonna scale back to make, you know, minimum safety accessibility for everybody, you know? Nobody's super excited about a foundation, right? We all want a strong foundation, but it's not the most beautiful thing and it's not the thing that we're gonna see walking into the school. So I think for everyone to kind of keep in mind as these decisions are hard, that it's until we dug five feet down around the school all this past summer, a lot of these things could not have been uncovered or fully realized for costs or scope. And you know, it's it's not a blame game, but it's showing very much where we are. And now going forward, how are we gonna handle what we've been handed?
The investigation part was a very helpful exercise for us to design because it gave us a lot of information that except for Mr. Hoxsey, none of us knew about it. And.
Even Mr. Hoxsey didn't know what was five feet down. Like Mr. Hoxsey knows a lot about this school, but he did not know what was five feet down.
So it was, it was so helpful to design to what is actually existing and to current code with the current testing methods that are available. Uh the investigative exercise was tremendously helpful to be able to design a building without because that minimizes a lot of unknowns during construction that also, when you have a lot of unknowns, it drives the cost too.
And and to say like, we spent money to do that investigation and that was not money we had prior to having the ban or having the bond approved or anything like that, so it's not things we could have known without spending money that we didn't have until we got the bond pass.
I don't know how many of the community members know, but there is a well underneath the building. And so things like that were news to us that we would have otherwise not.
But it's not a working well?
It's not.
Not anymore.
Not anymore, yeah, that's the.
Okay, interesting.
They built over a hundred years ago.
Thanks. But our structural engineer now has a plan in place with details showing how to navigate the foundation system around that wall and all of that is being captured while we design it.
And so I guess in in that we're saying we, we spent this money, we did this investigation, like are you confident to say like, hey, we, we have a really good idea of keeping within you know, kind of the costs and the work that we're kind, that you guys are kind of minimizing, saying that surprises because you've already looked at this, this is already when people say in construction, you already opened the walls and found the issues and said, well, now we've, this is what we all need to work on.
Yeah, and it was super helpful that Landmark was the team who was actually involved with the investigative work. Um they have a fantastic superintendent, his name's Tom. Um and he knows the ins and outs of bu- of the building. And his, that, his pre, as part of his pre-construction services was to review the drawings that we have put together and that exercise in itself has been invaluable.
Okay, great, that's good to hear.
Um before it gets lost in the details, did you mention the stairs, like replacement option for the uh basement? When you were talking about the, that went down.
We looked at a couple of different options, um Mr. Hoxsey suggested. Um so right now, the stairs going down and the stairs coming up, the way it is right now. He suggested, why don't we flip it? We tried that. Um as part of one of the options we presented was um using a ship's ladder. Um it's hard to take things up and down from the basement through the ship's ladder, but it is a possibility as part of a value engineering option. Instead of the stairs, we could do a ship's ladder instead.
Ship's ladder and dumb waiter?
We just have to find it.
Way down, you don't use, use the lift?
You could use a three-stop lift, yeah, you could use, right now it's a two-stop lift, one stop at the hallway and one stop at the um platform.
Oh, Chris, I'm not paying for more stops.
This is your stop.
I realize that they would have like, the cost differentials on all of us, is this, are we talking like five thousand dollars or are we talking about a hundred thousand dollars?
Significant, um.
I don't know what a three-stop lift is, but we could find that.
Like that, yeah.
And let you know. Um it's, it's probably not double the cost, but it's probably significant. Because the forty thousand that you mentioned for the lift is just for the lift, that does not include install. The structural framing, where and all that kind of stuff, so but when you're all said and done, you're double if not triple the cost for the the opening or the install, that type of thing, so it's, it becomes quite substantial.
But were you asking like, what's the cost of these stairs? Are we looking at saving five thousand dollars from going through these stairs?
Yeah, changes, the question is like, you know, how much is, are you saving or or costing is significant or is it minimal? And I, I mean, I'm not sure we as a group here are really best served by talking about a five thousand dollar change, you know, as a.
Correct, um those, the changes or like the options we're proposing is not to see small differences, but the fake ticket items. Uh moving from a metal stair that is in the drawings right now is more durable, but wooden stair is an option that is considerably cheaper. Um even better is putting in a ship's ladder, but also that we have to make a decision cognitively with in the, being able to use the basement and things like that as well, so.
We did discuss just closing it off too.
Yes.
It does have what's called the main point of entry for the district's um uh data and phone systems varieties, so.
So I mean, would this be, sure, would this be decisions like to talk to staff about how they utilize it and, I mean, cause like, how many people in our school actually utilize it, like what are we using this for? And then we can say, hey, we are going cheapest option on this, and if we see um ship sliders the cheapest option, like, what do, what do we lose or what do we gain? Do people once a year or once every five years need to like throw a box down or pull a box up on a road? It is not used um for that much storage, right? It was a lot of the school records, however, they have been now moved to one of the containers because we um purchased a new container, so there's really no stores. The other storage are things that I would say are not pertinent to school operations, decorations, um stuff that has been around for many, many years. Um so there's nothing in there besides what Bill just mentioned, we do need access to our internet and the core.
Um. Just, I mean, just to close this off, I think this is something that that should be decided by you and Bill and the staff to what inappropriate, um just, there should be a package brought to the board that reflects that those decisions. It shouldn't be the board to decide, I want a ship's ladder, I don't want those types of stairs, I want the excess stairs.
Right, yeah.
Just call it Matt's Ladder, it's fine.
Well, and that, uh that's also why um when I asked about the lighting, for example, because the lighting, I didn't realize was still in phase one. Um the, the school doesn't use the lighting, so we would wanna really make sure how much that is that we are putting into phase one and should it be in phase one or should it be in phase two or phase three, depending on the cost? And the school's usage of it. So then maybe those two items that stairs and the light are further considerations for you guys to with a way of.
Right.
Um I have a quick, quick question, is safe an acronym for something or just safe? Cause it's all capitalized, so.
Yeah, it's just emphasis on having the same building.
I wanna make sure I wasn't missing something, okay?
Um, so one last item in the accessibility slide is um H V A C is kept to a bare minimum, that is just exhaust fans to the restrooms. Um that has to be part of the minimum scope of work.
So that's a good, I know that's, that's a good example that you bring up right there, but to me, the HVAC is extremely important and right now we're only at the minimum and so we may be keeping other stuff that is not as important as HVAC and making sure the buildings are cool for children during really hot weather and warm, um so.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's a, the HVAC is one of the key items that we need to keep discussing about. It's right now in the landmark, uh uh the way it's laid out, it's in phase three. It probably needs to move to phase two in my opinion, but I think that's one of the, some background work we need to do as we get ready to come back to the board with a G M P guaranteed maximum price for the first phase of work and then for the subsequent phases.
Next slide please. Alright, so this is the fire sprinkler plan, superimposed on top of the fire alarm plan. Um the fire sprinkler plan, um you will see the sprinkler lines and the heads in yellow highlighted. Um and so those are required as part of the minimum scope of work. Um the school site is in a wildfire zone, um so it is part of the minimum scope of work required.
Great, can you show, can you just put out on the screen where the existing line is and where they currently go?
So there is an existing line um along the hallway, um and they go into um the classroom spaces um and the auditorium space and then um just minimally into the administrative spaces, so it's just a single spine um along the hallway and.
And that gets pulled out totally, right?
Correct.
On the entry, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, this is way more than, this is like triple what exists already, right? I'm looking at it, this is way more.
Um.
This was a surprise.
This was, yeah, we, we tried our best to navigate without having to do it, but um. Yeah.
Yeah, this is a, this is the code requirement that.
This, yeah, that was an. And then uh the building's also getting a fire alarm, fire alarm upgrade, so. All of the devices that you see, they're all smoke. Heat detectors, smoke detectors and car carbon monoxide detectors needed.
Was it code requirements and what's there?
And it has voice evacuation too, right?
Yes, the new, the new, the new code of ours, voice evacuation, though. You can hear it, they can see it, and this is a rather large ticket item, I'm assuming.
Fire alarm upgrades?
Yeah.
Um so the nice part about it is um the school already has a good system, uh I think it has a game work system already. Um they're just updating, upgrading the devices and relocating the system to the admin.
But I mean, just in general, the sprinklers and alarm system like that.
That is code minimum.
That's code minimum, but a very large.
Yes, part of a large ticket item, yes.
Yeah.
Um but enough, the end of my presentation, happy to answer a question.
You sure, you don't wanna?
So we still have.
Yeah, we still.
We're not done.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, we're not done.
Thank you for all that info.
Thank you, Sri, that was great. So um the next step in this process is for us to hear from the contractor, Landmark Constructors. And um the cost of the work is laid out in this slide. And you can see how it's been set up by phases and as I mentioned, there's still some discussion about what is the correct scope as we get into the G M P and I, I think we're fortunate that we have uh landmark here and we're fortunate that we're using the lease leaseback process, which uh the next step for them is to go out on the street and get sub bids and we'll be able to look at those bids with them and be able to help structure the guaranteed maximum price to include as much as we can of the scope. But you can see again that the total cost of the contract, the way it's estimated right now based on the work is about thirteen million uh dollars and so uh we, we have some work to do, but I wanted to have Ellen Kelton, who's the project manager from Landmark to come up and walk you through the basis of the work and the costs.
Right, we need board, we need members. Um so I just want, before we go to the next slide, I just wanted to talk a little bit about how we got to this budget. So we went out to the sub-community, the subcontractors that usually did this and perform this kind of work. Um for pricing and we used A S S plans, they're the current set of plans. Um when we went out and, and asked all this stuff, where are they gone? And these subcontractors, they know the plans are a hundred percent, so they've got a little bit of uh pricing a few assumptions in there so that they can get the pricing as accurate as they can at this stage of design. Um so though we went out um in August and then we updated pricing in a couple of key areas. The, the large scope items that they were talking about um just recently, so we got that updated. Um so it's very similar, the, the pricing um is based on uh the D S A submitted set, so most current information we have, so um next slide.
Uh I have a question real quick, just on the, on the phases, I know we're talking about minimum scope and the phases and stuff, so is phase one minimum scope like taps, we're not getting away with doing anything less than phase one and phase two and phase three are kind of we can figure that out.
So we'll talk about that a little bit, but um so, so that D S A minimum scope, the, the absolute minimum. Obviously, we can't just leave columns, we can't leave walls open. Um it has to be a functional building, but phase two will, the building will look unfinished if we don't, if we don't do phase two. What we tried to do was make phase three the items that you know, we can walk away, it would be functional, but it's not, doesn't have some of the things that obviously are important, like the H V C. Um so the, the phase one and you've got this indoor um and your packet is very small. But I wanted to include all the detail and that's, that's kind of what, what we like to do, we like to provide as much detail we possibly can so that um we can answer as many of your questions as we can by just seeing this. So um phase one, we did include a three percent escalation in these costs. We included an eight percent design contingency, obviously, the plans are still into D S A, we don't have comments back yet. So we wanna preserve some of those funds for any thing else that D S A that might come up. Um we have a ten percent construction contingency. Um and that's usually what we see for modernization projects, particularly when um when it's a project like this one, we've identified as many things as we could and we've included them as allowances, we got to do a lot more investigation um than we generally do just because of the um E D C R work. Um but there are still things, we didn't open up every single wall, obviously, we didn't open up every single floor, so um we would usually keep that there for any unforeseen that come up.
So just as an aside, so the, these contingency amounts that Landmark has included are are consistent with industry standard all over the Bay Area and all over California in terms of the contracts that we see or school projects, um and they're, so a ten percent construction contingency is a way to mitigate any future risk of all the things that might happen. It's also used for uh scope gaps is what we call scope gaps between trades that maybe can't, didn't get ironed out at the time of bid. It can also be used by the owner to, and, and you know, just reluctantly from the contractor side. But to put in something that when we get into the work, you know, we really do need to have that. So we have a contingency built into the contract to help with that. And the um, the other piece of that is the design contingency will eventually go away. Uh we may, when we come back with the G M P, you might see something on a line item called a D S A contingency, if we don't, if the bids go up prior to the final D S A comments being received. Um so.
Yeah.
And these things are consistent with how the work is performed in California schools using this type of contracting method in order to essentially try and mitigate the contractor's risk and the owner's risk as we go forward.
And then we have included allowances for specific items that perhaps we don't have detail on or we're still trying to, to work through. Um but our goal is to identify those items specifically, rather than having one big bucket of money and say, oh, here are all the things that, that we're gonna be um taking from, we try to be really specific, get pricing from subcontractors so that we, it's not too large, not too small, the goal is to be right on with, with those allowances.
So I had him blow up the estimate part if you want to, be telling you the big picture, right?
Sure. Um so just going through um phase one and, and this, this aligns with the, the scope that you saw before. Um for that D S A minimum scope, so some of the larger ticket items is, is the concrete in division um division three, you can see that's a big item, obviously, you're doing foundation work, you're doing the work um at the walkways in the front. Um another big ticket item is um in division five here. So that's going to be all of the new columns um in metals, some of the canopies. Um and right now, we have included the staircase. Um, and right now, we have included the staircase, so that would be a V E item that potentially we could reduce, but right now, we have that at about, um, ninety seven thousand dollars. Um, another large item is the rough carpentry, um, in division. We're going down and I'm naming everything, so everything that we have in here are big. Um, so we got rough carpentry, and that's almost a million dollars. So a lot of the, the new framing, um, gotta frame the walls out, there's a lot of scope there. Um, and that's just in phase one, there's additional carpentry, some of the finished work that we've got in phases two and three. Um, in division seven, the, the largest items there are the, um, the roof, the clay tiles. Um, and we've got some value engineering that we're talking about for that, and that actually is a large item that we could potentially value engineer. And I'll go through that when we get later, um, a couple slides more, but, um, right now, what we have included in that budget, um, just the roofing alone is, um, about six hundred thousand dollars. Um, some smaller things, the doors and, and, um, doors and frames, some of the new hardware in order to be, um, accessible, make sure it's safe, that, you know, in an emergency, people can get out. Um, in division eight, division nine is mostly the finishes, so flooring, it's patching back the areas that we're working in. Um, and some of those items, the, the new, because we're redoing the restrooms, how do we do this, but then now as well. Um, those aren't, those are mostly all smaller dollar items. We do have just interior painting. So in phase one, we've just included interior painting, and we've left the exterior for a later phase. Um, the couple other high points, the fire suppression, um, for the new fire sprinklers, that's about a hundred and twenty thousand. Um, and then, a, a, a very large part of the budget, um, and this is one of the areas that we've seen in the market has been, has experienced some of the largest escalation. Um, is electrical, so electrical, right now, we've gotten phase one about a million dollars in electrical. Um, and we're essentially redoing all of the electrical in the building. You don't want to open up walls and then go back and, and put, you know, once the project is finished, save that for phase three, and then you're redoing a lot of the finishes. Um, but, uh, got new fixture or new, new lighting fixtures. Um, so that is a, that is a large cost, and we are continuing to work with several of our electrical subcontractors. Um, to try to look for ways, there are a lot of items on our value engineering list, um, that are electrical related, electrical, low voltage, those, some of those items to try and get that as most, the most efficient as we can, but still providing the value, right? You don't want to, you want an updated building that's updated to now. You don't want to be had, you know, have a finished building and then have something that is, is gonna need it upgraded in ten years, and things change fast, and, and some of those low voltage. Um, fire alarm is also included in that cost, I don't have that broken out separately, um, right now, I've got it with the sub numbers, but, um. I did want to mention that we do have, I had a number plugged in for the theatrical lighting in phase two. So that was a phase two, and we can look at that some more and see about shifting that. Um, and then minimal work, uh, the only other large item is, is the earthworks, though, for the front of the school. Um, there's just, there's that broken out there. Um, so that takes us through phase one. Are there any questions before we move to phase two?
How, how often, or, uh, what's the hit rate on, on getting to, uh, uh, a hundred percent of your ten percent con- construction contingency? Like, how often are you guys using all of that, like, in, in work, you know?
So it really depends. Um, so our goal is to, to preserve that as much as possible by getting costs assessed now. Um, and included in allowances or in the competitive subcontractor bids, we've had projects before where we and really large projects where we haven't needed any of it. Um, but with, especially with the modernization project where there, there are unknowns. Um, there is more potential there, and there are a lot of projects where if you have finite funding, you want to spend all of that, you don't want to leave any of it, you know, unless you've got more projects going forward. So a lot of times owners will use that, that money, and then but generally, we are returning some of the contingency at the end.
You know, you think of eighteen percent on eight million dollars, that's a pretty good chunk of money, right? And you're like, oh, that could definitely go into the, the next phase or whatever, so.
Right, and, yeah, and we'll talk about that too, because that is, that is part of how we manage a GMP. And during construction, how we're managing the money throughout the project is identifying decision points at which, okay, we, we've gotten through the initial work, we've gotten through some of the, the earthwork, we've gotten the columns in. Our risk is reduced, and then as a team, decide together, okay, how much of that can we pull back and potentially use it for scope, because our goal is try to get you as much scope as we possibly can, it's, that's just, that's what we want for, for the project and for the community.
So, um, in understanding the phases, like, timing wise, we're saying, hopefully, this would be June twenty twenty sixth start.
Mm-hmm.
How long do we estimate phase one completion? Would this be like?
Yeah, about eleven and a half months.
Eleven and a half months, and then for the phases, are we can, like, are we thinking, you know, phases in terms of decision points or phases in terms of putting it down, and then months go by and then coming back to it? Or are we thinking they would, we are hoping that they would just?
That they would be able to roll one into another, because if, if they are separated, then there's remobilization costs, there's separate general conditions. It's, it's, it's better for the budget if we can roll right into them or have the decisions before the phase, you know, before phase one is finished, to do phase two, so then they can run concurrently, we can pull some of that work back into the timeline that, that will already be there for phase one, that is the goal.
And so the understanding is that, like, the absolute has to happen, work happens in phase one. It's an eleven, eleven month, um, work time, and then we're hoping it rolls into phase two, but we're definitely, like you had said, it will be an unfinished building or unfinished project, like, not be able to take occupancy unless we complete phase two?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I wanted to understand.
And, and I think our goal and our recommendation is going to be that we proceed with, um, some type of bridge financing to our state funds that would allow us to enter into at least some, a phase one and some iteration of phase two. So they would essentially happen at the same time, if you will.
Okay. And then the, this plan and the way, like you're saying, if we, we're able to merge some of the work or whatever, these phases also allow for kind of shifting some work into others and, you know, maybe adjusting timelines, but we can find ways to put it in without, like, escalating costs, because now we're doing them all under the same, you know, grouping of work, and you said general conditions and things like that.
So, and, and what we've done in some other districts is, um, price all of the work, but have alternates. So we've done before where we've got seven alternates for various scopes of work. And some of them may be phase two, some maybe who's three, so we can get that competitive pressure um, on the subcontractors and get the absolute best pricing. And then we'll write those into their contract as an alternate, so that at any time, if, if it looks like, you know, we've, okay, we've gone through some of the risks, we can reallocate funds from contingency or from other sources into the work. And then be able to easily pull that into a contract and have, you know, some pricing where we're not just going back out for this small scope of work and maybe not getting as competitive pricing as we would otherwise.
And so adjustments of this phasing, when we're pulling work from other phases up, which is a great problem to have, is gonna be coming back in front of us at some timely to say, hey, we're gonna adjust this, and now the board is going to be approving, you know, the HVAC moving up into a different phase and things like that along the way?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we, we would have the contingency funds within the contract. And typically, if we have to go beyond what's in the contract, we would bring amendments back. But we, so we could, we would definitely involve the board in looking at anything that we're doing that would move, that would essentially expend the contingency funds. We typically, and we get from the contractor, we keep a, what's called a PCO log, a, a proposed change order log, or a proposed change log. And so we would have a running total of amounts that are being billed against contingency, and that would be a kind of monthly update to the board. So here's the status of the allowances, the total amount is a hundred forty nine thousand, we've already expended twenty five, so we have that much left. And the same thing for the contingency, we'd have PCOS that are approved, and you'd know what the bottom line is, and then we would bring back, we would discuss with you any major moves that we would have to bring in previously, the alternates, for example, to go into that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we've got phase two up here, so, so phase two would include, um, some of the large scope items would be, um, basic wood trim, so the previous phase one doesn't include, so there's wood trim throughout this campus. Um, and so it, that would just, phase one would be basics, and this would be, um, just what's required essentially. And this would be basic, so maybe some trim around doors, um, that sort of thing, but not to the level that you would currently see, that's in phase three. Um, have basic casework, we've divided the casework up into a phase, some in phase two, and then some in phase three, the balance in phase three. Um, in phase two, we've got the historic window replacement, so phase one does not include the, the historic window replacement. It just includes the, the, um, the storefront entrance at the front of the school. Um, this phase two also includes minimal HVAC replacement, so I believe there are two um, wall systems at the admin spaces that we would have to replace. I heard that those, um, may not be functioning well. Um, so we have that included in phase two, and then the theatrical lighting, that's where that one is in.
Can you tell us what the assumptions are in the general conditions, is that two months?
Uh,
Time over, I guess.
Yeah, phase two, yes, phase two is an additional two months. And so if we were able to pull some of that work into phase one, then that would be renewed. Yeah.
Yeah, that was gonna be one of my questions, are these, assuming that these are concurrent phases, like, we're not re-mobilizing, we're not. Like, this is priced as, if we were just tacking on.
This would be just tacking, yeah, can, continuing through, yeah.
Is that the same for phase three?
So phase three, we have remobilization.
Can I ask a curiosity question about when we shut down our main building, we're currently using those bathrooms for our school, and we haven't added more bathrooms, so.
We added one.
We added one. But how do, how do we handle that through this, whatever, eleven plus, thirteen months of construction? Like, do we still need bathroom requirements, or is there something that allows us to operate with that few bathrooms because we're in construction?
There's only one adult bathroom in there, so we're fine with adult bathrooms. We actually have two bathrooms in here, and we have staff bathrooms out on the playground. The, I know.
On the playground?
Yeah.
True, the entrances have to look like that.
The, I would say we have enough bathrooms, the problem is they're far, and we have little learners that have to walk very quickly, and that sometimes doesn't make, got it, make it when they wait till the last minute.
So it, it's a, it's a really good question, and we also, I mean, we're just getting into the, the, hey, we're getting ready to vacate this building and close it down. What do we need to do? And we've thought about it a lot over the years, but now we really have to do it, so that's a good one. Uh, another district we used, um, restroom trailers.
Okay, so there, there is an option for something like that, we don't have to build anything.
Right, you can bring these sprinklers on, and they, they have a self-contained sewer tank that gets pumped out, that kind of thing. Um, the other issue we were talking about is the, the protection of any of the main point of entry MDF data, uh, switches during construction, and, well, did we need to do it? How do we extend a line out to where we're gonna be? We already have one, but we have to protect it. So we've got a list of things, we have the moving and the coordination of the moving of the staff and the classrooms, uh, so that's on our, on our, uh, uh, winter and spring to-do list.
Could that be something the community helps with?
Oh, yeah.
Because Sinole, as a town, might help us move that school.
Yeah, I think it'd be great, so. You're a really good question.
All right, any, any questions on phase two? Okay, phase three. So, phase through, three, the way that we looked at this was, it's beyond the current funds, um, and so it would be considered for some future time. Um, so we've included six percent escalation, because we assume that that would be a few years out, and what we're seeing, what, what we usually use, um, for escalation is about three percent a year. Historically, it's been plus or minus that, but, um, three percent's usually what we see. So we've got, we do have some additional general conditions in there, remobilization costs, the HVAC and associated electrical are part of this phase three. Um, and we can go through those, those numbers, what I've got on here. Um, also in this phase three is the exterior frontage work, so, um, anything that was not in yellow. Um, on the earlier slides, a ramp, stairs, landscape, lighting, walkways, and fencing um, are all in this phase three, the finished wood trim, um, the, the additional balance of the casework, um, I think there's one canopy in here, the skylight replacement, and then the exterior painting. Uh, so just looking at where we're at, um, for the HVAC, so, um, just the systems only, and that doesn't include any of the framing or electrical required. Um, we're at six hundred and four thousand for the HVAC, and then we're assuming about two hundred thousand dollars for the electrical portion of that scope. And then, um, for the framing, that's probably about the
The carpentry?
Yeah.
Three oh nine, have on here, division six.
Yeah, but that also includes, um, that also in, is, uh, the casework, and some of the, the, that's also including, um, uh, your trim, so that's part of, all part of that, that number in there, so.
For HF, you said it was six hundred and change, is that?
Yes, correct.
That's six, six on that, it looks like a five.
Yes, six thirty one or five thirty.
Yeah, it's six thirty one.
Is the casing, this casing that we're talking about, this is not requirement for, um, historical building or whatever?
The, the casework?
Yeah.
No, that would be, that's built-in desks and.
Oh, storage, got it, got it, sorry, I was thinking of, I was thinking of actual trim.
And what's like, what is it, when you say canopy replacement, what exactly is that?
So that would be just the, the, uh,
It's about the stairs, six years.
About exterior canopy?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Where are there skylights in our building?
In the hallway, in front of the kindergarten classrooms.
Oh, really?
Skylight, yeah.
I must never look up.
And with the, the skylight replacement, that doesn't create a problem if you're doing it in phase three with leakage and, and if you've, you've done one and two and still have, you run the risk of having problems with your roof not being sealed perfectly, or?
No, I mean, a lot of the work's done in accordance with the drawings, which, yeah. What we don't do is we don't, we're building a leak.
I would say, if we did, it'd be better to do the, the skylight replacements at, at the time of the roof, but it can be done later.
Cause that, that's it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and much of the work, obviously, in phase three, it, it would be better to do it while we're doing the rest of the work, it, it, it's price-wise and, um, the flow of work, it, it is better to do it then, but, you know, these are hard decisions, but, um, that have to be made, so this is our, our first pass at it, and, um, obviously, there's a lot of discussion that's supposed to be had, but.
If you were to do, um, Phase three as at the, basically starting it at the end of phase two rather than doing it with one and two. Is there a significant price savings by doing, uh, altogether versus if it were just a flow in from two to three?
There would be a, a price savings. I mean, there would be.
Is it significant though, or is it?
It depends on what the work is. It depends, you know, if you're doing all of it, then there would, there wouldn't be removalization costs. There would be.
That's if you do phase three years later, right?
Yeah.
I'm telling you, like, if you do phase one, phase two, and then you immediately go into phase three, what's, what would be this? Would there be, you just did that, would, obviously phase three would be cheaper than what's on your, probably on your list.
Yes, correct.
Is there a significance difference between doing it one to two to three? Or if you did three at the same time as one and two, is there a significant difference in that cost?
There is, it's a couple hundred thousand if you do them concurrently. Yes. Any other questions?
Would it be possible to get, I know that you kind of walked through them, but no, I would say the categories that you have are. Pertinent to how you all look at what's there. Is there a way to get a, uh, kind of like a. What you basically did by walking us through, but with a breakdown of like, okay, and, you know. Division three, it's primarily this, this and this. So these are the prices of those things. So like, rather than just, you know, like. Electrical is one point two million, like what, those, the big ticket items within that electrical, what is that really?
So I have some breakdown, but I don't have, currently have. A detailed breakdown for electrical. It's something that we would have to go back to the subcontractors and get. Um, that is something that we can do and it's something that during the GMP process, we definitely will go back and do. So that we can see where those costs are, are allocated. Um, we do have more detail than what you see here. Is what, um, we've shared with the team previously, but I mean, we can get you that as a.
Yeah, I think it might be helpful for, for us to know, you know, kind of what's within the buckets that, that in terms of categories, just so that we know, like, well. Of the, you know, six hundred thousand for this item, you know, two-thirds of it is just this one specific aspect of it. And, and what that really means, so that we understand, rather than it could be twenty thousand things in there that we don't know. Might be helpful, it's possible.
Yeah. And then I think we've got one more slide and then. Oh, we've got, so, um, going through our value engineering, so. Um, some of the, some of the value engineering we've done is, is shifting things to phase three, obviously some big ticket item. But looking at what we've, um. So some of the items that are still in phase one. Um, we, we put this list together with feedback from subcontractors, with things we've seen on other projects. So just going through this list, you know, we've got a larger dollar figure at the bottom, but there are some of these that have three options and you've got to pick one. Right, so, um, total, if we were to take everything on this list, the potential max savings is, is about four hundred thousand dollars. Um, so some of the items we're looking at are finish related, so the one through four on your list are, are finish related. Um, and in the blue, those are three options and you would pick one. Um, and there are various, they range anywhere from twelve thousand dollar savings to just under eight thousand dollar savings. Um, so we'll have to work as a team and figure out what makes the most sense. Um, in the, the items here in, um, pink, those are the roofing options. So that's the, the biggest dollar value engineering that we've identified to date. And so you would pick one item from, from there, um, and that, i- if we were to pick. Let's say the lightweight concrete S tiles, so it's tiles that look like the clay tile still kind of meets the look and feel. But it's not the clay tiles. It's not pulling all those off carefully. You know, there's breakage there, storing them and then reinstalling them with some new, um, and anchoring them like Phil talked about. Um, if we were to do the lightweight concrete S tile, you're looking at saving about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. They still have a roof that looks similar, um, but it's a new material and it's a safe roof that.
And one of our next steps related to the roofing is to get samples from some of the subs and so we can make that final decision in terms of how we want to go.
And due to look, it still meets, like, it still meets the criteria of historic building environments.
Yeah, okay. And then some of the other items that, like a VE nine is, um, a different window, historic window manufacturer. Um, that perhaps could save us about fifty thousand dollars. And so those suggestions are coming from the sub-community and as we're working through and, and going through the GMP process. There may be other suggestions that they bring to the table. Um, this is just, you know, what, one of the, the firms that we work with on a regular basis had, had brought to us.
I'm gonna do a follow-up on that one on the windows. So we are, we are setting up a, a site walk with one of your window subs.
Yes.
And to. Take a look at the window replacement scope and the options for replacement. What kind of shape the sash are in, what kind of shape the, um, uh, frame and assemblies are in, what's the level of dry rot? Obviously, there's been a bunch, there's been some replaced already on the. South side, I guess, and, uh, there are plastic and aluminum on one side and several of them. So it, it's a little bit of a hodgepodge, so we're trying to put together a site visit to try and nail down where we want to go with them. You, you know, if we could, one example would be if the sash were. Um, the, the sash are, you know, they don't meet current requirements for energy efficiency, right? The glazing doesn't. And so could we just replace the glazing or could we just replace the sash? Or do we need to replace the entire assembly with the frame, the sash and the glazing? And that's really what the, the big price is, is replacing the entire assembly. That has ramifications down the line. If we didn't have to replace the frames, but only replace the sash, for example, and many of these are these three-stack high. On encasements that are, that be, getting those made is almost impos- impossibly expensive. But how could we replace just the sash in a new configuration that matched the look? And not have to replace the frames and all the trim that's with them? You know, there's, so we're, we're still trying to nail this one down, um, that's, I guess, the one way of saying, so. Sorry to interrupt, Ellen.
It is, cause I mean, as a team, I think we've spent a lot of hours trying, trying to look for anywhere that we can save and, and get more out of it. Um, and then if you look at the bottom of the list, though, I then, one VE thirteen to the, to the end of the list. Those are all electrical, um, value engineering, so, um, just. Trying to, to fine-tune that, maybe do, um. You know, different lighting package, something that looks similar, but isn't quite the same thing for maybe a little bit of savings there, so. Um, again, we'll continue to look for options as we go through the process.
And some of the subs in their bids have included different options, right?
They do, yes, yes. And what one firm will suggest, another firm has another idea and that's. Part of, I mean, it's a great part of the process because we can bring those to you and say, which of these is, do you think is, is. Closest to what, what you want. So.
Um, so the column on the right is under that selection, the, the amount of savings. That right, so you could take that like, you know, seven thousand.
Here, yes, yes. So if you take, um, so for these, you just take one, for this, you just take one, but the rest of it, yeah, the, the total.
The numbers, yeah.
Any questions on? Right? Next slide, please. So just to wrap this up, I, one of the, there are additional options for cost control and cost saving. Um, one of the, the things that we can do is, is time the bid right. Um, so the sooner, because this work starts in the summer, um, that is. The time that everyone in education wants to do their project. Um, so what we can do, um, as part of the GMP process is get that out to the sub. Get the, 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 uh, request for bids out to the subcontract community as early as possible, so January. Um, make sure we get in front of anyone else, which means there are more subs available. And you're gonna get more competitive pricing because they don't have their, their summer full yet. Um, and that way we also know at an earlier time where we're trending price-wise. Um, so that would be our recommendation is to, to get it out as early as possible. And then what I mentioned before, bid two and three, phases two and three. Um, with some of those items as alternates, so that we can pull them in. We have fixed pricing for it. We know where it's at. Um, and that will also protect against some of the escalation that we might, might, um, experience. And then the, the next two items, just real, reallocation of unused allowances as the risks are, are. Um, eliminated and reallocating unused contingency as construction progresses, so. Um, we, we've done that in a lot of places and it's something that's pretty common, you have fixed funds. You don't want to have them left over then, you want to spend everything that you have. Any question?
On, on timing, like you mentioned, I'm sure everybody in education's trying to work during the summer or start work during the summer. Is there any value in, in trying to time that differently, like, oh. Uh, I'm not, again, not saying that this is the best scenario for us here, but like, starting construction in January, it, you know, instead and, and.
Well.
That way or?
Part of it too, we don't want to have an open building, um. During going into the winter, so the sooner that we can get anything that we're doing to open up the building, we want to get that done also during, that's the other part is. We want to do it when it's good weather. Um, and we, that is an adjustment that we made in the schedule is, you know, we're, we're pushing some of the work forward. So we can make sure that we have a dried-in building and, and the roof back on by the time wet weather arrives. So that's the other thing that you're, you're finally fighting against, um. In some cases, it does, but there's also the uncertainty of delaying the work further into the winter. Um, just with escalation and what we've seen with tariffs and, and the other challenges. Yeah, yeah, so it's a good question. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, the numbers. Wait, we're on the numbers. Some more, thank you for, um, everyone for the, uh, attention to all this detail. It's really great for us to, you know. Just to go over this, uh, with you. Um, so, uh, funds available for the project. Um, this slide, uh, is, um. Can you, uh, Manny, can you, uh, blow up this? This is what we call the, um, summary of available funds. It's one of the worksheets that's printed out for us. Um, typically for our, it's included in our CBFC packet. I don't think it's in the packet I included today, but this. Yeah, gives us an opportunity to look at what is the uncommitted fund balance. So this is not how much has been expended, but it's after all of the commitments that we've made. For example, we have an open commitment on the NPR for Cal State Construction for the remaining. Of the construction costs that have not been built to date. But so our uncommitted fund balance, including the quarry funds donation. Is a three million, four ninety-five, eight eighty-nine. The band proceeds would be added onto that, three million, five, six, nine, three seventy-five for a total cash available. Uh, at, say, February first or so of twenty twenty-six of seven million, sixty-five thousand, two sixty-four. Next slide, please. This is the same slide that we looked at prior to the minimum work discussion. And so the current available funds from the previous slide, seven million. Sixty-five thousand, two sixty-four, the minimum work, phase one cost from the landmark, uh, worksheet. Eight point five, eight five, two eight, one, one, seven. So our, our delta to funds needed for phase one. Is a million, four sixty-two, eight fifty-three. And if we take the calculation further. And we add our anticipated state funding of three point three million. We get a total budget, including adding back the FEMA funds of three hundred and fifty thousand, ten million, three sixty-seven, seven oh eight. And then we have a current full estimated cost of thirteen million, one eleven, six oh two. So our delta to the total project is two million, two million, seven forty-two, eight ninety-four. And as I'm going over this, I realize in, as we go forward, actually in our next meeting or in January, we need to. Get a better sense of the phase one, phase two scope that could get us into. Ten million, three sixty-seven, seven oh eight. Okay, so I, clearly there's a, there's a piece missing in this puzzle, but I, this is where it is in the minimum work and the full work. But we want to come back to you with, wh- where is this with phase one and phase two we can afford? Added together and, you know, getting us there, so, um, part of the discussion is to go forward. Uh, next slide, please. So timing.
So wait, just on that, isn't it true that if we did the, if we're at ten, three, six, seven with everything in ideally? That would cover phase one and two for sure.
Yeah, it, it wouldn't totally cover it, but it's close. It's pretty close, I think. Well, let me, if, okay.
The math looked like it was, they just took the phase one and phase two from the two that you had, you'd be.
For construction, yeah, I think we're at nine, nine point nine.
Okay.
But is that including the state funding?
It is included in state funding, so yes, this does require us to get there, but it. I don't think we're quite agreed on internally and with the, the board, obviously, too. I think we need to include the HVAC work in the project in the phase two one, and that's gonna change that calculus a little bit. So that's, you're right, thank you, Ms. Rome, I, I agree. We are there if we just do that, but we need to. We're gonna need to adjust what's in phase two assumption, I think.
Right.
Just as we presented it and gone through it and really had a chance to think about it. So, uh, we've got a little work to do, but we're, we're in shooting range, yes. Uh, next slide, please. So, wanna talk now about options for, um. The main building project in terms of getting us the remaining funds that we need, need above the seven million that we would have as cash available. So one option is to wait for our state funds. And this is the same slide we presented in October, our seismic, uh, our small school district application. We, again, would do a, an OPSC submittal in November of twenty twenty-six. There'd be a processing time of about six months, get approval in the spring of twenty twenty-seven. And then we'd have to wait for priority funding into the winter of twenty twenty-seven, which I'm assuming would be in December. Uh, in a timeframe in twenty twenty-seven. Uh, for the seismic application, if we submit in May of twenty twenty-six. Uh, we would have a six-month processing, uh, assumption. Uh, and SAB approval in November and get priority and funding approval in the spring of twenty twenty-seven. Okay, so in thinking about the discussion of a bridge loan. Those are the key dates and the, the seismic application. And OPSC accepting our application, if I fast forward to our recommendation. I think staff and team would recommend that if we do a bridge financing. That we don't do it until we have an accepted application. By the Office of Public School Construction and we're listed on the workload list for the State Allocation Board, which would be. A, you know, at some point, June, July, something like that, where it would get on the workload list in twenty twenty-six. In my experience.
Can you take a step back though and explain how the bridge loan you're talking about is different than the bridge loan that earlier? That John Eisen was talking about?
Good point. But, but the other part I wanted to highlight, and we're gonna, we'll get into that discussion in a second with these dates is. If we, the, our ability to repay a bridge loan, if we bridged to state funding would be. Timed our repayment points would be in this, in those two points. Uh, of the larger amount for the seismic in the spring of twenty-seven and a smaller amount. That's the reimbursement for the NPR in the winter of twenty twenty-seven. So, yeah, let, let me get into that discussion in a second. I just wanted to key on those dates. Can, so, um, next slide, please. So, um, if we wait for the state funds and we don't enter into a contract. If we, if we have seven million to do just the minimum work required. Of eight, over eight million, we're not gonna get there. It would mean we'd have to wait to start construction or do something less than the minimum. It would mean we'd have to wait to start construction or do something less than the minimum work required. And end up with a building that might not be usable at the end of seven million dollars worth of work. So it would mean eighteen months minimum of cost escalation, and there's a lot of unknowns about the market, but. Waiting for our state funds is the most conservative approach in terms of conservative in terms of the financial risk involved, okay? Uh, so that's, but it has a lot of costs for us as a district and not just financial costs. I think it has a lot of costs. From the political standpoint in the community and from the school and the use of a building and being out of the building for that long. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, the other option uh is a bridge loan or bridge financing. Different than the ban, which is a bridge to a voter approved bond sale. And that would be to do a bridge loan to the receipt of, based on the receipt of state funding. And so we have about three point uh two million dollars in state funding in various stages. Uh, right now, but the bridge loan, if we got a loan of that size, would allow us to start construction in twenty twenty six. Combine the scope in phases one and two, uh, subject to determining where the, what the phase two scope is, and it would give us. Uh, there's the estimated state co- uh cost of phase one and two, nine point nine million. And it would allow us to complete the work on the project in a timely fashion and. Uh, I think it's important to note that it would still not allow us to do all of the work in phase three. Okay? So I'm gonna let um. Mr. Eisen come up and talk about uh bridge loan options. We we don't have. Well, let me just let uh John put to you a second about bridge loan options.
I think we go to the the next slide here. So um you 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 got the concept, whatever bridge loan is, right? Money today, repaid by money in the future. In this case, uh, we're saying, hey, those state dollars are worth a lot more today, but we don't get them. Until middle of twenty twenty seven or end of twenty twenty seven. Um, but a district can go out and borrow money really for any intent and any purpose, uh, including to bridge for those future dollars. So one of the things that we stress to every district is, hey, what's the likelihood of repaying? Right? Because at the end of the day, you're the ultimate credit, right? You're saying we as a district are going to be worried to 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 repay this debt. Um, so we want to look at the likelihood of funds available through the state program, right? We're talking about two separate pots of money, modernization distinctly for small schools. Uh, seismic, which is a di- another distinctly different pot of money. But I think we would have clarity, we should have a pretty good idea of of. A, are those funds real? Yes. B, where are we in line and are we going to be able to get them? Yes. C, okay, when? And that's probably the biggest question. I don't think we would recommend the district doing this if you couldn't have an answer to A and B. Right? You gotta know that this, the dollars are there. You gotta know that you're in line and that you're eligible. So then we're talking about C. That's the question mark. You can structure a bridge loan using uh a number of different criteria, um, and never a different repayment options. And what we would do is we would suggest, again, if we can say yes to A and B. We would say, hey, let's borrow these dollars and let's defer our first payment and maybe even our second payment. But we have to get to a point that if for some reason C doesn't happen, are you okay making the payments out of the general fund? At least for a year, you know, and we ran some preliminary numbers, you know, you could do a fifteen year borrowing. Uh, at just about four percent interest. Uh, with deferred payments, and so your first payment, which would be um late, or I should say, middle. Of twenty twenty seven, so when you would expect the first seismic draw of about a hundred and forty eight thousand dollars. That would be assuming you're gonna get three and a half million dollars. You're trying to leverage and bridge the the entire amount. You could bridge a lesser amount, you know, you can bridge a greater amount, right? At that point in time, you're looking at your general fund and you're looking at your budget and say, hey, could we sing this pain? So that's one example of, okay, could you afford a hundred and forty eight thousand dollars? You know, in the summer of twenty twenty seven. And then let's just say there's a delay and for whatever reason the state money is not there, could you afford another hundred and forty seven thousand dollars in twenty twenty eight? And and the way that this one's structured would be another hundred and forty seven thousand in year three. By year four, then you're having to repay principal. So part of this is structured to be cash flow sensitive to the district's budget. That's one uh option of dozens. The idea is if we were to go down this path, and again, we could say yes to to A and B, we would then say, okay. Shay, let's talk about affordability, like if if this for some reason you didn't get the money, are you okay making this payment? Are you okay making a second year payment, right? So just like a home mortgage, right? You kind of evaluating, well, what if you lost your job or what if I got a pay cut? What if my hours got reduced, right? Are we okay paying it? You do a similar exercise with that. Um, so if the district concludes that A and B are viable and you're okay with breaking case of emergency, C, making a payment for one year, maybe two. Uh, then a bridge loan would be a great option based on, you know, construction cost escalation, re-mobilization. And all of those things that cost districts a lot more. Um, so those are the options that exist. Um, I think we covered pretty much.
You speak to how common this might be to do.
Oh, yeah, I mean, bridges are are very common. We're we're doing one right now with a district that comes to Haymarket County. Um, you know, a- a- again, it boils down to what's my likelihood of receiving these funds? And and districts routinely say. The the dollars today are worth more than those dollars in the future. And I'm prepared to make payments if for some reason those dollars in the future don't materialize, but we really don't. Recommend a district taking a a gamble, you know, if they're there. It's really a question of when are they there, right? The Geo Bond, we know it's there. State Aid, it's there. It's a question of when, not yet. But, you know, we would get clarification from the state of California on, again, yes, there's dollars, yes, you're in line. Because that's usually how it boils down is that you get in line and you can say very clearly, I know I'm going to get funded out of this pot. Uh, and then it's just a question of when. You have other questions on that?
So just to be very clear, you are comfortable with your A and B points for these for us, for those who, or you still need to do an assessment further?
I I I'm, yeah, I'm not comfortable. I'm not uncomfortable, but I just don't know. That's that's additional conversation to have the state to say. Please tell me that I'm, that you have the money. We we know they have the money. Please tell me that I'm in line based on order of, you know, who's put in and who's already eligible and who's already been approved. Uh, that you're not going to run out of money. Usually it's, here's a big, you know. Couple of billion dollars or several hundred million dollars, and then here's District A. They're taking sixty two million, District B taking seventy two, and then that hundred million dollar number drops or the billion dollar number drops, drops up. So you can usually tell pretty clearly.
How long will it take for you to find that, make that determination?
Um, that, you know, that's a good question. I don't, I don't have a timetable for you on that. Um, in part because I haven't bothered to to make that initial inquiry. So I don't know if if Bill has any insights, I can certainly reach out to the state consultant that that we work with and say, hey, what, what insights do you have? But I haven't asked the question.
I would think we need to know that. I mean, you have to have that that answer.
Yeah, just we, we're actually not bringing this tonight.
I know, I know.
Yeah, yeah.
We need to know all this.
Yeah, and and honestly, the more that we can um delay on the bridge loan. The more affordable it becomes because it pushes back those breaking case of emergency debt service payments that you have to make. If we closed this bridge, which we're not, if we close this bridge in February, the first payment would be February of twenty twenty seven. So, okay, let's push this back six months. Okay, now I'm in August of twenty twenty seven. Can I push it back nine months or even twelve months? Right? Each time we push it back, we push back that first potential payment. So. I, we we could certainly find out about it because that gives you more clarity, but in my mind, I'm thinking, yeah, I've got some time, but we'll we'll look into it this week for you.
What is, what is it like the time for um, I guess, applying for a bridge loan versus receiving funds?
Uh, it's it's similar to 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 the ban, similar to this bridge loan or any other financing. You're looking at anywhere from sixty to ninety days. This initial research, we looked at uh what's called a public offering and a private placement. Um, a private placement is a little different mechanism to get there. Uh, it's actually a little bit quicker. So if interest rates and costs of issuance are preferable under a private placement, you do it. If it's preferable to do a public offering, then that's what you do. So things are always changing, but as we ran these numbers at a private and a public offering, private was. Most economical and a private placement financing usually can get done in forty five days. Because there's just not as much work that goes into it.
I'm just curious, in terms of like you said, we could push off as far as we possibly can and then go, okay.
Yeah.
Six days, we have some money.
Yeah.
For construction, when we want us to.
Private place.
Construction.
Gives you a lot of flexibility in that regard. So, yeah, if we could push this off even to the to the summer or even the fall, assuming you were able to cash flow. That would just, again, give us that, an extra year of having to not worry about making a payment in case the state delayed funding.
You do this as a note offering um rather than going to, like, putting in place a credit facilities?
It would just be a lease, you know, there's some private placement banks that maybe a dozen or so. Uh, that say, hey, I'm not into buying bonds or lining up investors for bonds and then selling them to investors. It's, I actually like to just buy these and all earn the interest myself. So these private placement banks, they do their own due diligence. There's no rating, there's no credit rating. Or no insurance. There's typically no, there's very limited legal documents. Um, it's just an easier process. But those bigger, or excuse me, those private placement banks, um, you gotta fit within their box. They don't go outside of fifteen years. They don't like really big loans. Um, and then their interest rates tend to be a little higher, but their costs of issuance are lower. And so when you blend those two together, that's when you say, oh, private placement makes sense, you know?
I think some of the time, besides knowing. The answers to A and B, as he was referring to, is knowing what our cash flow is, like you said, and being able to enter into contracts. Um, with companies, right?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, we're almost done. Yeah, I've go to the next slide, please. I think I have. Uh, more simplified discussion, uh, John, uh, in some of finishing up on yours, but um. We did review with the Alameda County Office of Ed, it was Cheryl Pfizer, um, what is the ability of the district to make some payments? And there there is some funding that could support that. I mean, we're not, we're not taking, uh, asking the board to take any action tonight, but we'll come back. With some of that information. Again, the district would be responsible for payment if the events, the funds are not received. And we want as much certainty as possible prior to proceeding. So um, you know, we have one application. For uh an almost a million dollars that's on the state allocation board's workload list that's accepted by L P S A. It's on the workload list beyond Proposition Two Bond Authority for all modernization funds. And our uh intent is to take that application. And at the time, the small school district program, which has available. Funds under Prop Two, at the time that opens, our plan is to take that application and put it in that line. Uh, along with probably, you know, thirty or forty or a hundred other small school districts, but there's. Three hundred million, I believe, available, something like that. I can get back to you with the number, but. Our plan is to go into, submit that application that's already been processed by O P F C. Into the state's small school district funds that has bond funds available. We won't have any certainty on that. Until after that November submittal, so sometime in December or January of the twenty twenty seven. In terms of certainty on, a real certainty on that one. We know that there's bond authority. We know that we have a modernization application, and according to the regulations that are being approved, we would be. Uh, in, you know, we would be uh uh an eligible district. So the seismic project is a little bit different because we have not made an application to L P S C yet. We're in the process. We just had our meeting with D S A last week to uh confirm with them what they call the minimum work required. And and the O P S C application requires D S A to certify that the plans contain the minimum work required. And that letter is, uh, along with the D S A approval for the final set of plans. Is the, are the last two pieces that we need in order to have a complete seismic mitigation program funding application. So that data, as I think I shared with us. Our submittal, it would be sometime like May, potentially June of this year, get in. And the the date that we'd want in terms of having certainty would be when does the project appear on the financial? The facility hardship listing of the state allocation board, and they publish every month with their agenda. A listing of applications that are being processed and the estimated dollar amount that's associated with those applications. So that would be a point at which we could say was not a hundred percent, because the state will never give you a guarantee of payment. Until you get it, but it's a, it's a pretty key indicator in the world of state funding that you're on the workload list with a. Facility hardship application that we know goes to the top of the funding at the state and jumps up all, I have to add with their application. So um, just to, Manny, do you want to go to one more side? And there's, so those are the considerations that you've got, uh, we all have before us. Uh, the project should have D S A approval in the spring of twenty twenty six, right?
Yes.
Okay. The timing of our available funds will limit our ability to start construction. And it potentially limits our ability to enter into a contract for this full scope of work. All remaining Measure J bond funds can be available early twenty twenty six. State funds won't be available for another year after that mid twenty twenty seven unless the district considers bridge financing. There are available options for starting construction phased contract. There are costs. To waiting to start construction, price escalation, and there are costs to starting with phase construction, including extended time. Next slide, please. The staff and team recommendation, the superintendent and myself and our team would recommend that. We go out to bid for subs in early twenty twenty six or even Christmas twenty twenty five, right? Now, now you got a lot, and, okay, that we, we need to get on the street and that, give us some certainty and get out ahead as far as we can. Uh, um, of the market. We would recommend entering into a G M P contract in the spring of twenty twenty six for the identified minimum work scope within the available funds. We would recommend securing bridge financing linked to state funds only when we have an accepted application at the Office of Public School Construction. And then entering into a G M P amendment for both phase one and phase two project within the scope of total funds available. And we're. Next slide, please. We're, this is not an action item. We're seeking for direction and um. We'll obviously be coming back to you with plenty, a lot more, but thank you for listening to all of us. It's really good.
Can I ask, can we have um Cheryl do a a financial analysis on the bridge financing? Um, and also do a sensitivity analysis, but uh on the assumption that. Uh, for example, we have a reduction, a ten percent reduction, let's say, in in um funding or enrollment that causes reduction in funding. Uh, so that we can do and have her give us from that. The recommendation on whether or not to, and to what extent we we can comfortably take on the risk of a a bridge finance. And then in the range of what, three point three million, or is it your number? Um, I think that would be helpful to have, while you guys are also checking to see whether or not, to what extent the state can meet the requirements or, well, give you comfort about that on that.
Any comments or questions from board?
Just covered one item on the agenda, guys.
You know, sorry. But thank you for listening. I mean, it was, it's really good to, this. I mean, it was, it's really good to, this kind of, uh, this setting is really good to get into the details and we appreciate it.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
That was a lot, that was a lot of work.
You don't get to talk about it till next month, you know, so. Feels kind of weird moving on to the next item. This point, uh, to be review discussion of possible action to approve updated Measure J bond, uh, program budgets, fiscal impacted the worksheets. Uh, any comments or questions?
I think we covered them all.
Move move some dollars around.
I'm okay with it.
I'll move to approve the um financial update.
I'll second.
Resolution twenty five, twenty twenty six, twenty four, authorizing the dis饅ance and sale of twenty twenty six general obligation bond. The maximum principal amount of four billion. Is that, um, that was four point?
It's, you know what, there is an error on the agenda, but it's correct on all of the attachments.
Okay.
That's four?
Yes, fourteen. So it's resolution twenty five, two thousand and sixteen, fourteen. But on this attachment, so it's fourteen. On the actual documents, it's correct.
I see. That's actually a different catch than I was talking. I thought it was four point four million. Thinking of something different.
Might be. Like it got changed when we opened it.
Or maybe one of the slides had four point four and it was the beautiful.
Uh, no, it's four million.
Alright, um, there. In the documentation, there is um a statement and since in sections is for you, John, because I I'm assuming that you're gonna be able to answer it since bond council's not here. In section two O two E, there's our representation. I was saying the foregoing provisions in the section, any of the terms of the notes may be established or modified under the purchase agreement. In the event of a conflict or inconsistency between this resolution and the document, governing the sale of the notes, the provisions of the document governing the sale shall be controlling. So I just wanna make sure clear that that's the that provision basically is only with respect to changes for variations in interest rate and payment timing. Is that all? That it limits or is it? Are are you guys interpreting it to be broader than that? To basically be everything in the resolution?
Yeah, I'll be honest, I bond counsel would probably be the better one there. Just to clarify, the resolution for the ban is saying that that is the basically the lead document as opposed to the What is that?
No, this is, this is saying that the the purchase agreement controls.
Uh, so the completed purchase agreement controls.
Yeah.
Yes, then that would yeah, term, uh, and interest rate and redemption provisions, anything that's gonna be unique to the pricing of the bands. Correct.
Okay. Um, there are some type of graphical issues, like in section two O nine, it talks about current interest bonds rather than the current interest notes, which uh, should that be corrected? This go around?
Uh, it did, yeah, I mean, you can provide those. That's not gonna materially affect the resolution itself. Are you also in the in the uh purchase agreement?
No, I'm just, I'm just reading the resolution. The resolution itself that had things like that. Um, there is uh, otherwise in the resolution, it says the board, this is section four O five, the board hereby finds determines that the tax rate needed to levy to be levied to pay interest on the notes would not cause the district to exceed any of the limitations set forth in sections fifteen two sixty eight or fifteen two seven O of the education code. That's book.
That's the same. You can't go above the statutory sixty dollars.
Okay, that's that one. Okay.
Right.
So we can confirm that, right?
That 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 is.
In section seven O three, there's reference to, um, uh, it says, um, whether it's provided or permitted that there be deposited with or held in trust by the paying agent or other agent money and or securities in the necessary amount to pay the notes, the money and or securities. So to be deposited or held may include money or securities held by the paying agent. The funds and accounts established under this resolution shall be federal securities. Then it references, um, the principle of an interest on which, when due, in the opinion of a certified public accountant delivered by the district, will provide money submitted to pay the maturity value of the Series B bonds to be paid.
See this, this is, you said section seven O three?
Seven O three.
Okay.
Isn't it the the notes under this resolution?
Yes, that's correct. That should reference the bands.
Yes, that's the note.
That would be a typo there, yes.
Page twenty.
Then, under section seven O six, the waiver of personal liability, it has no officer, agent, or employee of the board or the district is individually or personally liable, blah, 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 which is all fine and good. Should it include trustees?
Shouldn't?
I would thought that it would say no trustee, officer, agent, or employee of the board or the district is individually or personally liable with the payment of the notes. I mean, we are as a board are approving this, but it's not including us expressly as being exempt from liability for purposes of payment of the notes.
Yeah, I I'll, I will say, I don't know if officer or agent what is what they're referencing to as far as board members versus I I would assume you guys would be officers by that.
Maybe.
I don't know who else.
But I would have thought that they would have been very explicitly saying includes board members that are the trustees. Page twenty one, seven O six. And then the last question I had for you, I guess, would be in appendix D. It says the, um, the par amount, um, for purposes of calculations of Penix B is three point six six million rather than four million? Is there, can you walk me through why it's a low, why the lower amount is the par amount? It's assumed.
Um, I'm, oh, D.
Extended B.
Oh, B, okay.
This is the base, this is the.
Right, this is the good faith estimate.
Yeah.
Okay, and so specifically, you're talking about number three?
Uh, in the footnote, it says information based on estimates made in good faith by just by you. Um, estimates include par amount of three point six six, three four four point five eight. Wouldn't the par amount be four million? Or am I misunderstanding?
I'm wondering if we wanna bring this back and have the council here so that we can answer the questions. Bill, when when do we want to have this? Can we bring this back in December or do we need to have this approved tonight? To move forward?
Be a question that John could answer in terms of the timing. Uh, I think it would be fine from my standpoint.
Yeah, I, the three point six six, I think, is is the par amount. That it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be for, because you've got cost of issuance and you've got what's called premium.
Hmm.
That's part of the bond anticipation note sale. And when you've got the premium, that doesn't count against par, although those dollars can be used to pay cost of issuance and can be used to pay that service.
Okay.
So, uh, the the these estimates, these good faith estimates are accurate.
Okay.
Ted, what do you think about writing down, memorializing your edits? We send them to the bond council.
Sure.
Then we're able to bring it back. Um, what we haven't answered is what is, is there a problem with waiting till the December ninth meeting to approve the resolution? Like, does that? Is that negative?
From a timing perspective, no. If you guys want to approve them in December, that's fine.
But I would, I would recommend that, that.
Okay.
We do that. I'll give you my edits.
Okay.
Comments.
Perfect. Okay.
Um, and it would be good to just sort of, so for for this one, for Penix B, can you give us like how they calc, how they came up with the par amount and and if the if the notes are four million, how to read this with a par amount?
Right, the notes are not to exceed four million.
Right, but that's the, but isn't the assumption that we're we're gonna get four mil, we're gonna go out with, I mean, obviously you can go lower than that, depending on how the how it plays out, but like, it would be helpful to know if you're assuming that you're gonna go out with four million, what, how does the par amount calculate against that? Like, what's premium, what's not?
Yeah, we could, we can give you the breakdown, but having a four million dollar in in remaining geobond proceeds means we're gonna get a lesser ban amount on anticipation note, right?
Sure.
Okay, so we're gonna get a le- lesser amount. So the par amount based on today's inch or when we provided this information was the three point six six million dollar number. And then you see the net, right, in the, I don't know if it's.
Three.
Subset, right.
It's three point five six.
The net of what the district would get, three point five six, and then the total payment amount when you add principal plus interest is section four.
Right, and then, and then the finance, finance charges are, where are those coming out?
Those get paid out of a combination of premium and then the delta between the par amount and the proceeds.
So that, that's the part that would be helpful to understand.
Sure.
Just making.
Sources because it's, you'll be able to follow.
That'd be great.
You bet.
Okay. Okay. Till the next meeting.
Now, I have one of the last agenda items.
To the review discussion, possible actions to approve counselors compliance updates.
Yeah, this is actually not bond related at all, but it is timely because it's affecting one of our retired, um, recently retired employees. When they filled out their retirement paperwork, helpers came back and said our salary schedule was not compliant, and then they asked to do an audit. So I worked with our legal counsel. Um, basically, we are not complying in two areas. Our salary schedule for classified management did not have an effective date and also did not have, um, board approval date. So those two things were missing. Then it also didn't have clearly stated that the longevity was compounded year after year. And so, um, what we did is we went back and you'll have the two updates there, one with the added, um, language of approval and effective date, and then MOU. Um, we clearly stated that the longevity is compounded. There is one more change we have to make, but it's not that, which is just the names at the bottom of the contract that was done, of course, because it has the old names. Um, in future, December one, we'll also need to update our classified and our um AFT, our teachers, sorry, because those also don't have um, effective date and board approved date listed on those, but I need to work with the unions. And they don't change anything on the salary schedule in terms of payment or pause. It really only, um, looks like it hurts the employee when they go to retire. And so we just wanna make sure we get that corrected. Any questions?
So this is something we can, we can approve with just that name change on the symmetry page?
Yep.
I'll move to approve. With the nature's first.
I'll second.
All his favorite.
Have one public, public comment on adjournment?
And just said it was item three.
Yeah, three.
But that's not adjourned. This, this is four as adjourned.
Oh. What is?
Oh, I think you're looking at a, the old.
Oh, sorry about that. We still would love to have.
It would have been nice if, um, Don and Phil were still here. Oh, but it's, it's just so disheartening to to hear about what we can't do and um, what can't be funded. And, um, the school is so important to the community and so historically significant, which I think really helps enrollment too. Um, oh, Goodwill's here. But I'm wondering, should we start talking about another bond? And have we had any discussions on that? And and if we were to talk about having another bond measure, what what the timing should be or the amount? It it just seems to me that we we expect more from the school and we're really cutting back. And maybe we can go back to the community that really values the school. And talk about it some more.
I think we would have to make it an agenda item to actually talk about it. Um, but if the board is in direction for next time or it's going to be.
I certainly would be open to hearing it. I think that, um, it may be a lot happen in December. Um, not, and it's not because it's not a good idea, just because the December meeting, there's two meetings actually in December. One is the organizational meeting and the other is the the whole the brutal of all the things that we have to do for.
Right. First interim, um.
So it would be probably better in January. Yeah, to have a discussion in January.
I would agree.
I agree. I mean, unless there's something, maybe it's possible to check the bill just on timing and like, is there some importance of doing it earlier?
I think one month. Would you think it would be more important if we were to have a discussion of, of another bond? With one month time difference of talking about it in December versus January?
No, um, I think January would be fine. The this statutory deadline is sometime, if you were on you went in twenty twenty six, twenty twenty six or twenty eight or the two.
Elections.
Yeah. I think the statutory deadline is in August or October. We are gonna bring you some information in January, um, working with Matt and Shay and on the deferred maintenance list and other items related to education program needs, for example, bathrooms for in the garden TK. Um, just, you're just in the beginning phases of getting a list together, just did the watcher, so he has some idea of and other outstanding needs that the school has.
With that, eight nineteen. Well, Jerry.
Sorry about that. I messed up the agenda and pointed the old one. I apologize about that. Well, that's fine.